Indivisible with liberty and justice.
Justice for all.
For all.
Thank you. Okay. Um, I, tonight, we're going to start with ceremonial presentations. City Clerk, could you please pull up the proclamation proclaiming March 24th, 2021, as equal payday for 2021? And I already saw that we have Gatan Andrews on the line. So, um, whereas equal payday was first observed in 1996 by the National Committee on Pay Equity, or N C P E, to raise awareness about the gender wage disparities. And whereas the fight for equal pay continues, as many push to bridge the pay gap between men and women in the workplace, the wage gap remains prevalent, remains prevalent throughout the nation in countless occupations and industries. And whereas, according to San Mateo County, women earn about 81 cents on the dollar compared to men, these wage gaps are even greater for mothers and most women of color. And whereas despite education levels, research shows women still earn less over the course of a lifetime compared to men. And whereas lower pay means women have less income to save for retirement and less income counted in a social security or pension benefit formula. And whereas fair pay strengthens the security of families today and eases future retirement costs while enhancing the American economy. And whereas although women have taken great strides towards equal pay, we need to continue to advocate for equal pay and put it into practice. And whereas we encourage everyone to acknowledge gender wage disparities and participate in efforts to achieve equality for women in the workforce. Now, therefore, we, the members of the Millbrae City Council, do hereby proclaim March 24th, 2021, as equal payday 2021. And I'm very thankful that Gatan brought us from the American Association of University Women. She is the secretary and a member, a Millbrae member of A A U W. And please join us and accept this proclamation. Gatan, Gatan. Gatan, have we unmuted you?
Um, I've asked her to unmute, so.
Thank you. I know I saw her in the bullpen.
She's still there.
Gatan?
Can you hear me?
You're coming in a little faint, but that's good.
I'm sorry.
Perfectly fine, thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, the American Association of University Women thanks Mayor Schneider and the City Council in the, in the city of Millbrae to, I remember when I called the mayor Schneider and, and discussed this with her, she was so excited and looking forward to it. And she was so helpful to, to do this for our organization. Also Elaine Tran was quite helpful as well. So we, we're quite excited and it's, it's part of history in Millbrae to, to have this. And we, we thank you again as a group. And I'm treasurer of the American Association of University Women, so I'm not secretary.
So my apologies on that, my notes.
To all of you. And I'm glad to be here. Thank you for helping us to do this.
Thank you. And I thank you for bringing it to our attention. It's been a few years since I checked this, but when I was in the Emerge Program, I believe at the time, if you are of Latina descent, you might make as little as 44 cents to the dollar, depending on obviously what your job is, but it can be as low as 44 cents to the dollar. And it's no wonder it's so difficult to get ahead in the world. Council, any comments? And I thought there might be a couple of public members. They emailed me earlier that they might want to speak or just see, are happy to see that this resolution came to the city of Millbrae. If you are interested in speaking, please raise your hand in the chat room. Council members, was that Councilwoman Papin? Nope. Okay, I don't see anyone. Gatan, we talked about if the Historical Society would like to keep this as a document, historical document. I think this is our first on equal payday, and I thank you for being here.
Yeah, we'll have to discuss it with President Munoz and, and see, you know, someday, if, if they want it, you know, we, we could frame it and put it in the museum or in the, in the book that we have at the museum. If, if that's what the Millbrae Historical Society wants, you know, that would be a part of history of Millbrae.
Excellent. And I'm just seeing that President of our Historical Society, Mr. Munoz, President Munoz gave it a thumbs up. So I think we are good to go.
Okay.
So well, thank you and thank you for joining us tonight.
Oh, I'm glad to be here. Thank you for taking the time on your busy schedule.
Well, we appreciate it. All right. So next up is the Millbrae Cultural Committee Commendation. And you know, I read these all the time and I am very happy to read these. But Councilman Fung, you haven't had the opportunity yet to read one. I know then Mayor Holibur let me read one. Would you like to read or would you like me to read it? And I'm sorry, I didn't give you advanced warning.
No, that's okay. I don't think we need to read it out, you know, the entire document, but I just wanted to say, I wanted to thank the Millbrae Cultural Committee for organizing this event and making this event possible for everyone, you know, not only to the people of Millbrae, but as well as everyone else and on a, on a Zoom call such as this, and to continue to make these really enjoyable, you know, festival delight events possible, even through a pandemic. I just want to thank their effort putting this together. Thank you so very much.
Thank you, Councilman. I'll add a couple of things from reading the commendation. We, we already thanked Millbrae Cultural Committee a few weeks, a few council meetings ago, but we didn't formally thank them in the Lunar New Year Festival, and that's why this is returning. But Millbrae Cultural Committee is so much more than just the Lunar New Year Festival. They helped the city with mass distribution programs critical in the time of COVID. They donated to Mills Rapid Relief Fund to help support, again, families in these challenging times. They've contributed to helping other essential workers within the community. So they are, they are, obviously, we thank them for their community events, but we also thank them for their civic duty in helping us get through COVID and look forward to many future partnerships. And I was not, so we've got Marion Kong and John Munoz here to accept this commendation. Marion or John, would you like to say anything? John's hand is up. City Clerk, if we can unmute Mr. Munoz.
I'm already unmuted, it looks like. Thank you. Marion Kong apologized, couldn't be here. She's on another Zoom meeting with, I think, Jackie Spear. And so she asked me if I will accept this great honor and on behalf of the MCC Board and President Nie Hua Chan and Marion Kong, our treasurer, I accept this great honor. And it's always an honor for the Millbrae Cultural Committee to be able to serve this great community and the great city of Millbrae. Thank you so much for the recognition. It is appreciated.
Thank you, Board Member Munoz. Thank you so much. Thank you to MCC for everything. Okay, moving along, we have the City Manager up for Agenda Overview.
Yes, thank you. Again, good evening, Mayor Schneider, members of the City Council, Tom Williams, City Manager. Just a couple of quick updates. The northbound 101 on-ramp from Millbrae Avenue or at Millbrae Avenue will be closed the week of March 15th. That's starting next Monday. And during the week, Highway 101 will be closed for sewer main inspections and cleaning. The ramp will be closed from 7:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. each day, and work is expected to be completed on March 19th. So expect some traffic delays and just thank everyone for their patience and understanding as this work is completed. Also, our Millbrae Recreation Department is hosting a virtual bingo that will be held on Thursday, March 18th, which is a week from this Thursday. So March 18th, a week from this Thursday. Anyone can participate and the event starts at 6:30 p.m. and it will take place on Zoom. People can sign up and participate by visiting our city's recreation website and sign up at www.bit.ly backslash M I L R E C. Also, we have registration now open for basketball, so players that want to learn to shoot, dribble, handle the ball, and just play the game in general can sign up. The program runs from April 12th through April 29th, from 3:30 p.m. in the afternoon to 4:30 p.m. It will be held at Marina Vista Park at 100 Bass Street. And again, any, any kids that would like to participate, it's for students from sixth to eighth grade, they can register again at www.bit.ly backslash M I L R E C. And then also, we've had a couple of issues as, as we have sent some information out to the community on ensuring that people get a building permit. Information is available online. We've had a couple of retaining wall failures recently and just wanted to remind everyone that any retaining wall four feet or higher does require a building permit. And we're here to assist and get you through our process very quickly. But please, all the residents out there, make sure that any retaining wall four feet or higher, that you do come in and get a building permit at our, at our building department. I say come in, that's, you can actually go onto our website and everything can be done online. You can submit your plans, you can get the application. So please remember to get a building permit for retaining walls. And then lastly, and I think the mayor will, will say this, but I'm, I'm just proud to quickly mention that this morning at the National League of Cities, not the state, but the National League of Cities, Millbrae was named by the National League of Cities and honored as a runner-up for the 2021 Cultural Diversity Awards. And they thank the city. This stems from the newly formed Anti-Racist Coalition in the city of Millbrae to promote racial equality, equity, and social justice within the city. I think as we all know, A R C, we've worked with them throughout this past year. So congratulations to the city on getting this recognition from the National League of Cities. Okay, so moving on to the agenda, this evening, we have our calendar of events, reports of bills and claims, report out of the March 2nd, 2021 closed session. There are no meeting minutes to approve this evening. There are no oral reports from city commissions or commission chairs. After that item, anybody from the public can address the City Council on any issue not on the agenda. People that would like to address the council on items not on the agenda will be limited to three minutes. After public comment, then we move to our consent calendar. We have four items on the consent calendar this evening, starting with item number five. That's to consider a resolution adopting the revised salary schedule for management employees effective October 25th, 2020, and to move the salary range, open bands for management employees, and standardize the financial services manager and execute staff ranges. I had a communication with the Teamsters Union, and I would like to pull this off the agenda just to simply communicate with the City Council on the conversation that I have with, with the Teamsters Union. Item number six is a resolution accepting the 2018-2019 Water Pollution Control Plan Improvement Project as complete and authorizing the filing of a notice of complete. Item number seven is a resolution accepting the Millbrae Street Rehabilitation Project as complete and authorizing the filing of the notice of completion. This is the Larkspur Project. Item number eight is to consider appointments to Community Enhancement Advisory Committee and Cultural Arts Advisory Committee and changes to the Economic Vitality Advisory Committee. I have received a request from the mayor to remove this item from the agenda, so not just remove it from consent, but pull it actually from the agenda and continue it for two weeks. Moving on, there is no public hearing items this evening. Then we move on to existing business. There are two items, nine and 10 under existing business. Item number nine is a review of the Millbrae Recreation Center Restoration Project. This is a design and construction update. Item 10 is to consider adoption of a resolution to establish a reimbursement fee program for the Millbrae Station Area Specific Plan and Environmental Impact Report. Moving on to new business, we have two items. Item number 11 is to accept the fiscal year 2021 mid-year budget report and adopt a resolution amending the fiscal year 2021 adopted budget. Item 12 is to consider introducing and adopting an urgency ordinance to require large grocery stores and drugstores to provide hazard pay to their public-facing employees during the time of the pandemic. Then we move on to City Council comments. There is no closed session this evening, and then that would conclude tonight's meeting. That concludes the City Manager's Report and Agenda Overview, Mayor.
Mayor, you're muted.
Thank you, Councilman. Those lovely airplanes. I'm looking for my front page. All right, thank you, City Manager. With that, we, as the City Manager said, we have no approval of minutes, no oral reports. To the public, yes, Mr. Conneran?
I do need to report out from closed session. The council did meet in closed session on March 2nd to discuss the Anton Devco lawsuit. There was no reportable action taken at that session. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Conneran. Okay, now no approval of minutes, no oral reports. To the public, this is the time, if you have a comment to the city, comments or questions to the city for items not on the agenda, please raise your hand and the City Clerk will unmute you. We, as City Council, are not allowed to respond on items that are not fully noticed in an agenda, but we are listening to you. Elaine, do we know if we had anybody that contacted us prior to or by phone?
No, but the comments I received are for the items that are on the agenda and it was forwarded to City Council.
Okay, I'm just giving people time to, to raise their hand if they need to. Raise your hand in the, the participants box, but I don't.
While we're waiting on that, Madam Mayor, I'd just like you to know, we, we're not hearing your airplanes. We hear them at our homes, but we're not hearing it through yours. So you've mentioned it three times now. We're, we're okay. We can hear you fine.
Okay, thank you. All right, I don't see anyone from the public with that. Closing public communication and moving on to consent calendar, if I could have a motion for agenda items six and seven.
Don't move.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Holibur. City Clerk, could you please call the vote?
Okay. Councilmember Holibur?
Aye.
Councilmember Fung?
Aye.
Councilmember Papin?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Aliva?
Aye.
Mayor Schneider?
Aye.
Consent items six and seven is approved by the vote of five to zero.
Okay. City Manager, you wanted to mention item number five, and I do see that we have Julie Lynn in the audience. So Julie, if you want to raise your hand and comment.
Well, Mayor, I, if I may, this is consent item, and I don't, I mean, we can open up to the public. I think she may be.
Oh, I'm sorry. You just wanted to, to speak on it. Okay.
So real quick, I just, I had a conversation with the Teamsters Union earlier, and I wanted to convey to the City Council and publicly also thank the Teamsters for their consideration and work in helping us through this pandemic. They have sacrificed greatly and by no means on this report that we not want to recognize the work and, and commitment and sacrifice that our, that our Teamsters have made. We will be going back to the table with our Teamsters Union who agreed to defer a raise and some other things in a contract for a year. And I just wanted to recognize their hard work and their effort. And that this particular item will save the city approximately $180,000 annually as we reorganize, we eliminate one department head position that we consolidate, and instead of an administrative services department, that will become a finance and administrative services department. So this action is a significant cost savings to the organization. So I just wanted to make that point and recognize the Teamsters for the great effort and partnership that we have with them as well.
Excellent, thank you. So it's consent calendar, any comments by council or move along? Okay. And thank you, Teamsters. I know it's been a rough year and you guys are at the front line. I thank you for your service. We all thank you for your service.
Madam Mayor, no action on this item?
Oh, yes, thank you. We'll need a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Councilman Fung. Elaine, could you please call the vote?
Councilmember Holibur?
Aye.
Councilmember Fung?
Aye.
Councilmember Papin?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Aliva?
Aye.
Mayor Schneider?
Aye.
Consent item, item number five is approved by the vote of five to zero.
Thank you. We have no public hearings tonight, so we are moving to item number nine under existing business. This is the Millbrae Recreation Center Restoration Project Design and Construction Update. I did check in with Elaine, but with social distancing, I'm hopeful that every council member had the opportunity to get down to council chambers and look at the materials and the colors. We are apparently going to be looking at them and voting on some of them tonight. So if you didn't have a chance, please bring that up in your comments. But staff, if you can be ready with your presentation.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to introduce our in-house project manager and one of our engineers, Ms. Jane Cal for introductions.
Thank you, City Manager Tom Williams. Can I screen share?
Go ahead, Jane.
Thank you, Elaine. All right, are you guys seeing the right screen?
We are seeing the Millbrae Recreation Center homepage or the, yes, your cover page. I think you're good to go, Jane.
Thank you, Mayor. So good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the City Council. Jane Cal here from Public Works, giving an update on the Recreation Center project. Also with us tonight, we have Peter V. from Swinerton, our construction management team, our project architect Clarence Mamuak and William Gordon from ELS Architect and Urban Design, as well as our project landscape architect Zachary Davis from the S W A Group. So I'll, I'll start with the Agenda Overview. So tonight we'll be covering the background and then an update on construction, design, schedule, budget. And then we are seeking an action from council approval by motion of the recommended finishes that we are presenting tonight. All right, so background information. So August 25th of last year, City Council awarded the design-built contract to block construction. The design-built process was implemented to maintain the city's objective of opening the recreation center by spring of next year and to avoid the forecasted 7% to 10% annual escalation in construction costs. And then September 30th, we issued a notice to proceed for block construction to, to start work. October 1st, we had a groundbreaking ceremony. And then on November 24th, we was our last update to council, and the City Council approved the final architectural details and design. And a recap of that, there were enhancements that were added to the project, included stonework to the facade, redesign of windows throughout the building, as well as additional glazing in the community room, maximizing, you know, the openness and natural light going into the community room. So construction update, I want to start with a time lapse video. It is 11-second video showing beginning to about a week ago of construction progress. And I apologize if it's a little choppy, showing videos on Zoom can, can, can do that. So here you go. All right. So this is very exciting to see, see construction happening on site. And now I would like to introduce Peter V. from Swinerton to give a more thorough construction update.
Thank you, Ms. Cal. Good evening, Mayor Schneider, Vice Mayor Aliva, and council members. My name is Peter Warment Santi, also known as Peter V. I'm with Swinerton Management and Consulting, and it is my pleasure to be presenting this construction update to the council and those of whom we're watching at home. The city retained Swinerton Management and Consulting back in November of 2019. And as Ms. Cal indicated, the project was a bit overbudgeted and the delivery was not, was not scheduled for until 2022 at that time. Swinerton assisted the city in transferring this project from a traditional design bid build to a design-built project. This change in delivery method will save a significant amount of time in delivering the project and keeping the budget in check. The particular subset of the design-built delivery method that Swinerton recommended and the city accepted is called stipulated sum design build. We went with this derivative of the design build mainly to control cost, and the design build itself can shave about 30 to 40% off of construction time. Because we can save so much time, this translates into cost saving, not only because of the, of less overhead expenses, but also material cost escalation. With design-built, multiple activities takes place in parallel. Correspondingly, activities move very rapidly as soon as the contract with block was signed in August. I have to thank the city subcommittee and staff for keeping up with this rapid pace by making swift decisions. And I'm happy to report that the project is tracking on schedule despite a few setbacks that I will talk about in, in, in subsequent slides. So as you can see from the time-lapse footage, the project has a webcam that you can access to track construction progress. The link to this webcam is embedded in our city website. I would like to show the next few slides to give a very brief update on how we got here. Next slide, please. Prior to starting of any excavation of the work on site, the contractor completed a mandatory hazardous material testing and found asbestos in the tennis court underlayment and in the mastic of the old building slab. This work to safely remove the asbestos has to be completed prior to demolition. So we did this in October. This resulted in a four-week schedule impact. The remediation of required a 10 days, 10 working day notification as well of 10 working days of actual work. Therefore, demolition was pushed back by four weeks from the original baseline. And you may ask, gee, how, how can we still be on schedule? And this is because in scheduling, we do have flow time that, that we built into the, the schedule to, to try to anticipate things like this. And therefore, this was not part of the critical path item. Next slide, please. So. After the remediation, demolition work and the site was cleared, as you can see in this slide. The old building slab was complicated and massive because the old building was added to and remodeled multiple times. Massive amount of concrete was removed and crushed and reinforcing separated out. Concrete and old reinforcing bars were recycled during this process. As you can see from the slide, weather was starting to turn wet on us by that time, but rough grading was completed in November. Next slide, please. Okay. The teamwork on the new mat foundation. Hang on, I'm sorry. The teamwork on the new mat foundation for the building started in December. The use of mat foundation in the new structure requires that the material which was under the old slab be moisture-conditioned and recompacted in place to properly support the new building. We had our inspectors and geotechnical engineer keep watchful eyes over this. We had our inspectors and geotechnical engineer keep watchful eyes over this operation. And both the conditions and elevation of the pad were certified to be complete and in accordance with our specifications. Overall, a dry year helped us with the pace of work during this month. Toward the end of December, after the completion of the building pad preparation, due to the holidays, the rain, and subcontractor availability, we had to pause activities for about two weeks during the holidays. In January, construction was focused on utility installations, especially under the building footprint. I mentioned that concurrent activities earlier during my presentation, and this is a perfect example. The installation of the underslab utilities had to conform with the final design of the plumbing and drainage of the building, which was still under the final review and permitting. And therefore, things had to kind of wait for each other, but at the end, all the activities finally caught up with each other. And by the end of January, we were able to install all the underslab utilities under the building footprint. And we were able to start foundation excavation and install some vapor barrier and formwork. Next slide, please. Utility outsides of the building footprint continue in February as the footing installation progressed. The footing excavation was completed and vapor barrier was installed in time when a major storm hit, as well as the contractor took precaution to prevent the side wind and rain and storm force water under the vapor barrier. On February 19, the construction team concluded that there is excess moisture under the bottom of the footing excavation, which means that rebar installation, which is the next step of the foundation construction, may not proceed as planned without the risk of the future building settling unevenly. The team agreed to mitigate the situation by having several inches of muddy soil removed from the bottom of the footing, recompact, and have lean concrete poured to form a mud or slurry slab to stabilize and protect the soil from future moisture intrusion. This change led to a week of delay in completing the foundation, but did not affect the critical path again because other activities were on the critical path. Therefore, we were able to still stay on schedule. The cost of impact of this is about $70,000. Next slide, please.
Sorry, Madam Mayor, if I may say something?
Please, go ahead.
So, Mr. V., could you back one slide? Right, so you expressed that there's some excess moisture at the bottom of the footing excavation. As a project manager, is that something that you worked for Swinerton as our project manager and the construction management? Is that right?
Correct, correct.
So, you know, what precautionary measure was taken in order for this not to happen? And what happened, you know, what's actually happened towards the end? And it caused us the extra delay and sounds like we incurred an extra $70,000 as a result of this, you know, extra excavation. Is that correct?
Correct. Thank you very much for that question. That's a very good and technical questions. As we all realize, the schedule of this project is very important. And if it wasn't for the scheduled acceleration, we would normally not advise that an excavation of this size be performed during the winter season. However, to catch, to be, to keep on schedule and deliver this project by April of next year, we basically took a little bit of a risk and go ahead and do this and try to install a massive foundation during winter season. As such, we're taking a little bit of a risk too. And the contractor knows this, we know this, our soil engineer knows this, and we went ahead and do this. And we, and the contractor did everything that was expected of them with industry standard practices to try to prevent the water from intrusion under the vapor barrier. Unfortunately, the storm was a little bit too much for the vapor barrier itself without the concrete slab on top of it. And therefore, the water did get underneath the vapor barrier. We felt that the contractor has performed what is expected of them. But the unfortunate fact is that the vapor barrier alone is not sufficient. We need a slab on top of the vapor barrier to really keep the water out. And therefore, we have to go back and rework the soil a little bit, which result in some extra cost. But in terms of relationship, this foundation is approximately, say, I would say, $2 million, worth about $2 million. And so the extra money that we have to spend is roughly 3.5% of the cost. But with the benefit of the advanced accelerated schedule, I think it's a worthwhile expense.
Well, so if I may, Mr. V., I think, you know, I might have a little different view on that, although we do understand that there is, you know, weather situation that we need to be mindful about in the business of construction, which I have been myself in more than a decade. I think some of these watershed and water protection vapor barriers method and in protecting the ground that has now been excavated at that time could have been done a little bit more diligently in order to avoid these, you know, extra costs and extra delay in schedule. We retain your firm, you know, to watch out for these things, and we're hoping that you would do a good job at it. So we're really hoping that these things won't happen again, Mr. V.
I appreciate your comments.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. I would only point out that my house in Mountain View, they did not remove the expanse of soil, and it created hundreds of thousands of dollars of post-construction work on that. So I'm glad that we caught it. And the $70,000 investment is worth it to prevent heaving in our foundation. It's absolutely critical. So, Mr. Vora-Massanti, please continue.
I have a question.
Oh, okay. I'm on full screen. Go ahead, Vice Mayor.
So, I'm a little confused here because the foundation and the footing excavation and vapor barriers continue, but the excess moisture, has that been removed completely?
Yes, it has been removed completely, and the bottom of the footing has already been reconditioned. And we put in lean concrete to prevent any future water intrusion. The vapor barrier has been reinstalled. And as you will see in the next slide, reinforcing concrete, reinforcing bars have been delivered. And a little bit of it has been installed as of this week.
So we have no reason to think that there would be any issues with mold going forward?
No, this is, would be under the slab of the building. Therefore, it will not be inside the building.
Mr. Vora-Massanti, could you help us understand if we hadn't done this, what potentially could have happened to the foundation, even with rebar?
Yes, if the soil under the footing is not stabilized, there is a potential that the building can settle unevenly. And if that happens, crack in the foundation will occur and compromising the structural integrity of the new building.
So one more question, if you don't mind, please.
Please.
Is this rebar at all compromised?
No, the reinforcing steel is not compromised at all. And the structural integrity of the building is intact because we've gone ahead and take this precaution of removing the unsuitable soil under the footing.
Perfect. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I think, Mr. Vora-Massanti, please continue.
Thank you. I think, so that I can go to the next... Is this the same slide? I'm sorry, this is the right slide. So utilities installation is complete. So now, we are in March, we are starting to install the reinforcing bars. We will be installing items that have to go into the slab, such as the floor boxes for the outlet. And the crane is on-site to deliver the foundation steel concurrently. Again, concurrent activities is that the structural steel, the big steel themselves are being fabricated offsite at this time. And that will be delivered to the job site early next month. And the foundation, the concrete foundation is tentatively scheduled to be poured in two stages. The first stage, we are hoping to occur on the 25th, and it's going to take about 100 truckload of concrete. So we will have an early start. We will notify the residents of this and get the first half done. And depending on schedule, we may beat the 25th, or we may not. And the second pour will probably occur about 10 days after that. And then we will start to assemble or erect the steel. So that concludes my update, and it was my pleasure to answer your questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Jane? I have a question before we go on. Do I have you, Jane?
Yes, Mayor, I'm here.
The staff report shows a lot of additional actions. Do you have more presentation? Or do you want to take questions now in terms of the pouring of the foundation?
If you want to ask about pouring of the foundation, Peter is here to answer that. So if you want to ask it now, that'll be a great time. If not, we'll continue on to design phase.
Okay, let's go ahead. Councilmembers, do you have any further questions for Mr. Vora-Massanti?
I do.
I do.
Gina?
Yes. So, Peter, the entire area has been known for moisture. I hope that would have been communicated prior to the start of all this. It is, okay.
Yes, it's very prominent in our geotechnical report, and the building has been designed to accommodate that.
All right, I just want to make sure. We've had issues before there. So moving forward, thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Holibur, you're the only one that hasn't had any questions. I don't want to miss you. I can't see your face or the hands up.
Thank you. I don't know if you are going to get to this later in the presentation, but I saw in the report, there was an issue about the electrical transformer. What is the deal with that? And does that affect the critical path of the timing of the project?
Thank you very much for that question. Dealing with PG&E in any major project has always been a challenge, and this is not an exception. But I'm happy also to report that we're making very good progress with that. And the major consideration with PG&E at this time is the new location of the new transformer. And we're making great progress to try to locate this transformer, the new transformer, in a location where we can easily distribute electrical power to the remainder of the campus in the future. So it is not a schedule impairment at this time, but we also hope that PG&E will work cooperatively with us to deliver this new transformer. And the city manager has been very, very helpful in working with PG&E in this respect. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor, your hand is still up. Was that a new question or was that from the past?
New question, please.
Please, go ahead.
So, I concur with what Councilmember Papin says with regards to underground springs in the neighborhood. And there are some issues in that neighborhood with foundation problems. So I'm wondering if, in fact, 100%, this was weather-related with the rebar and what was going on. And when you pour the concrete late March, early April, do we have to worry about weather as well?
Look, thank you for that question. Yes, to address the first part of your question, yes, it is a known fact that this site is in the path of underground water that is flowing from the hill to the bay. And this shows up in our geotechnical report. And again, the building was designed to accommodate this. Therefore, there is no reason to worry about the structural integrity of the building. Number two, the pouring of concrete in the rain is going to be considered very carefully by the contractor. They cannot pour during heavy downpour, but during small rain or drizzle, they can do it. The rain basically just affect the texture of the concrete, and it make it a little bit more difficult for them to finish the surface of the concrete, but it does not impact the structural integrity of the slab. Thank you.
Does it affect the rebar, Peter?
No, once the rebar has been encased in concrete, water does not impact that.
Okay, thank you so much.
Ms. Mayor?
Go ahead, Councilman. Go ahead, Mr. Feng.
It's okay. Peter, tell us that based on the geotechnical study, how high was the water table? And was there any measure in terms of drainage, underslap drainages that was done to prevent, you know, the water table from creeping up on us and therefore soaking the slab?
Thank you very much for that very technical question. Water table fluctuate depending on the season, depending on the season. If we get a lot of rain, it does tend to get closer to the surface. Therefore, this is not an exact answer. But as you know, technical report, report seeing water at about maybe 10 to 15 feet under the slab. Our foundation doesn't go that deep, and we have not observed any underground water during any of our excavation.
The second part of my question was, was there any drainage just being done underneath the slab?
No, that was not part of the design. The design does not have any underdrain. But it does have crush rock, which is a form of barrier.
Cavilary barrier? Yeah. What about perimeter drainages? Any of that?
That, I would let our landscape architect answer that question, as that is more of a detail for them to consider.
Okay.
I'll set, Mr. Feng. I had the same question, Mr. Vora-Massanti, because I live just down the end of the park and then over right. We have a spring in the middle of Palm Avenue. And one of the first things I did when I moved back home was install French drains to keep water away. So, but you're saying that would be something that the landscape architect would consider at that time?
Yes. And Swinerton roles in this project is a construction manager. And as such, we leave all the design and technical issues to the designer of record on this project. And these type of questions would probably be better directed toward them.
Excellent, thank you. My last question, you mentioned that the steel is currently being fabricated offsite. I will tell you that I have spent the last couple of weeks watching the last year's worth of high-speed rail board meetings, and they had that steel failure on a bridge out in the Central Valley. Can we know that the fabricated steel that's coming into us is not going to have that happen?
You can rest assured that that will not happen because the steel fabrication is actually being inspected at the factory before it gets sent to us. And we have testing and quality control protocol to ensure that the quality of the steel that we receive meets and exceed all specifications.
Excellent. It's just something I'm learning in that project, and I would like to make sure that we keep a real good eye on that and learn from high-speed rails. And I would like to make sure that we keep a real good eye on that and learn from high-speed rail's mistakes. All right, no further questions. Jane, I think you can go on. Mr. Varamasanti, do you want to stay with us or are you going to leave us at this time? Or can you stay with us in case a few more questions come up?
I certainly will.
Thank you. Thank you. And if I remember correctly, you live just up the hill, don't you?
Yes, I do. I'm a Millbury resident for the past 20 years.
Excellent. And full disclosure, I work with your daughter. So lovely to have you on the project. Thank you, Jane. Keep going.
All right, thank you, Mayor. A design update. So I want to start a design update with a quick overview of the permitting process. For a design-built project, design and construction are essentially happening concurrently. So instead of a full design package that gets submitted to the building department for review, we actually have to submit smaller packages so that the early phases of construction work can proceed while the design team completes the design. So here we are, first bullet point is site demolition permit. So that was issued and site demolition work was completed back in October, November timeframe. A second package that we submitted was the site infrastructure package. And that included grading and site utilities, stormwater, sewer, electrical. So this is ongoing in terms of construction progress. The next package that was submitted to building department was foundation and structural permit. So this permit was issued and by issuing this permit, the project can also move forward with steel fabrication. And that was a critical path for this space of project. So it's great that that's already in progress and happening. The package that we're currently focused on is the site and building permit package. It's been reviewed, building department provided comments. And our design build team has responded to comments and the review of the revision is underway. Concurrently, Central County Fire is also reviewing the fire system. So that kind of wraps up the permitting process. And our focus right now is really to get the site and building permit issued. And then on to the design phases, design development phase was completed a while ago. And then Zen Build Team just completed the 100% construction document and that was submitted for the site and building permit. So as we wait for the review to be completed, we're now focused on interior and exterior design, finished selections, landscape, partscape, solar and low voltage system design, as well as PG&E coordination, which Peter V. had briefed us earlier. All right, and now I would like to introduce Clarence and William from ELS to go over the design updates.
Jane, quick question. What's an underground fire system?
Oh, this is just, so the sprinkler system is attached to, it comes out of the building as an underground pipe and goes to backflow. And it's connected to our water system. So that's the piece that's being reviewed right now.
Okay, it's not a new form of spraying from the bottom up in the event of a fire. Thank you. All right, please go ahead.
So Jane, would you like me to start? Was that the introduction?
Yes, please.
Are we all set? Okay, great. Madam Mayor, members of the council, nice to see all of you again. And thanks for setting aside time on your agenda so we could share this update. Let's see here, why don't we go ahead and click to the next slide? So we are going to share kind of four pieces. We're going to go from the outside of the building to the inside. So we'll start with the planting design and site amenities. And Zach from SWA is going to go over those pieces. And then William is going to come on and talk about the exterior building materials. And then we're going to go inside the building and we're going to cover two things. We're going to go into the big meeting room and give you a sense of how that is starting to look. And we're going to also talk about some basic lighting design ideas in all of the major spaces. And then I'm going to come back on and wrap up or share with you a donor recognition idea that the design committee has asked us to look at. And then we'll be ready to take questions. And of course, if you have questions along the way, please feel free to ask. Just one point of clarification, there was a lot of discussion and question about the whole water drainage and waterproofing issues. And they were all really good technical questions. I wanted to let everybody know that the drainage about the perimeter, especially for you, Councilmember Fung, that is actually handled by our civil engineer. And of course, as you know, it sounds like you're in the business. You know, a lot of that is based upon our Geotex recommendations. We take those and those are implemented through our civil engineer. The landscape architect, when appropriate, is looking at drainage in the landscape areas and has helped us cite some of the drainage on the pavement area. So that's how all of that is being picked up, just to clarify. Okay, why don't we go ahead and start with the planting design and site amenities? And Zach, I think you are first up.
Thank you, Clarence. Good evening, Madam Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council. It's my pleasure to present to you tonight. We'll start with the site plan, of course, with the new recreation center in the center colored white. We have Lincoln Circle on the top of the page. And the arrival drop-off ellipse to the left side of the building that connects immediately to the lobby. We have a sweeping paseo that connects around to the fitness terrace and the event entry to the community room. And just off of that to the right, we have the community room terrace itself. And then on top center of the page, we have the preschool play yard. And I'll mention just for context that the Taylor Middle School is off to the left of the page. And the central park, remainder of the park is off to the right side. And to build on what Clarence mentioned, because Mr. Fung asked about drainage, of course, the building sits in a context of paving and planting areas. And all of that is designed to pitch positively away from the building. And as Clarence mentioned, pavements are drained to area drains and are funneled to the two treatment basins, which are shown, the two shapes shown on the right-hand side, yes, top and bottom, thank you, Jane. And roof drainage as well funnels to those. So care has been taken to make sure that the building is on high and that water naturally wicks away. Next slide, please. We'll talk about trees. For the project, we have a great context of big park trees, including Coast Live oak, like the one that's next to the community room terrace. That's an evergreen oak. We also have redwood, which is another evergreen, along the tennis courts. And as it happens, along the backside of Central Park, which is off the page here, but that becomes kind of a backdrop for the long view off of the community room terrace. So we're tapping into the Coast Live oak and we're using that as our primary park tree, which you see on the top of the page and also in the parking area. And we've proposed London Plain Tree as the promenade tree on the curving promenade there. And three big-leaf maple, which are the big specimen trees, one at the arrival entry, one at the fitness terrace, and one at the preschool yard. The live oak, before we jump to the next one, I wanted to mention the live oak is an evergreen, very appropriate native tree. We've used it along that northwest side as a windbreak. We know we've got some winds and we think this is a good tree to help buffer that a bit. Next slide, please, Jane. Thank you. We've worked closely with the city to develop the planting palette. And you can see there's a fair amount of color and interest here. We've tried to add color and a variety of texture, particularly along the people areas from the drop-off and the lobby entry and along the paseo to connect up to the fitness terrace and then along the community room terrace itself. So we've got lantana and we've got two varieties of lavender to create that color and special textural interest. Next slide, please. This highlights what we think of as kind of the people areas, you know, where people are going to be the most from the arrival and the paseo and the two main terraces. Next slide, please, Jane. And on the northern edge of the project, up along Lincoln Circle, we're proposing still quite a varied and interesting palette, but a bit more muted, a native chaparral landscape on that hillside with a variety of plants, low maintenance and some interest, kind of a good, solid native selection there. And that wraps around the back of the parking as well. Next slide, please. Next, I'd like to talk a little bit about site elements. The block of colors you see on the top left are Davis colors. Those are integral color concrete colors. We've identified three, which are, you see with the arrows, the lakeside brown, the Mesa Buff, and the sandstone. These are for the special concrete areas, the paseo itself and the terraces. We've also identified three other colors that are alternates. We will vet this through the mock-up process when we begin to pour site concrete and we'll make a final selection. But we have chosen colors that are in the earth tones, kind of warm earth tones, that will create a pleasant environment, that'll work well with the planting material and the colors, and they'll work well with the building stone and building window mullion colors. We also have some light fixtures. We have a bollard light along the kids' preschool yard. We have a simple steel bollard along the drop-off edge, one which happens to be retractable to let fire truck through. And then we have two pole lights on the project. A razor, which is a 16-foot fixture in the parking lot, and a shorter 13-foot fixture along the paseo itself. And we're also showing the wall pack there, which is building-mounted because it's part of the exterior lighting experience. All of these elements, we expect to have a dark bronze finish. So there's a harmony there and they match the building window mullions. That goes for the preschool yard fence as well, which is shown below. That's a four-foot tall containment for the preschool yard. And then we have bike racks along the arrival entry near the lobby. Those will be a brushed stainless steel as we've coordinated with the city. And last slide, Jane, on the landscape show. This is a potential add to the project where we're showing two walls that bracket the community room paved portion of the terrace. That's an opportunity for fixed seating and some flush-mounted lights that could occur there for some extra interest. It allows flow of people out to the activity lawn. And the lawn there, you can see it's framed by lavender planting. And then it's perched up on the hillside. It's about six feet above the adjacent paseo and the asphalt loop around Central Park. So that whole terrace and the lawn is up. And the plant material at about waist-high will provide some containment and some privacy for that. So we wanted to share that potential add to the project.
Question on your wall?
Yes.
The wall down in the right corner there, okay, I've seen in many public buildings becomes a skateboard hazard. Like, I mean, it's a beautiful wall, but I've seen other public buildings where they had to put up like metal to stop, you know, skateboarding all along the edge there. So that just would be a concern. I don't know if you've had that in other buildings.
Yes, appreciate your point. It comes up, as you can imagine, all the time on public projects. And we prefer to try to, you know, plant things and have them, you know, situated in a way that they're not ideal for skateboarding. Of course, if it's something that is foreseen as a big problem, we can add a certain amount of design deterrence. We try to not just tack on kind of a skate deterrent, but we can design a way to limit the desire for sliding along those edges.
Yeah, we greatly appreciate the seating area, but I think we should anticipate that that is probably going to be an issue.
Thank you. That's what I had for landscape. I'm happy to answer questions. And also turn it over to Clarence and William to talk about the building.
We're going to be voting on a number of items tonight. I don't know if it's easier to do them in pieces or to hear everything and then try to remember everything that is going to have to go in a motion. City Manager, do you have any recommendations?
Mayor, I think it's at the pleasure of the city council, whatever your preference is, is fine with us, so.
Council, do you want to hear the whole presentation and then come back on each thing that we vote for?
Mayor, I would prefer that we do pieces.
Okay, thank you, Vice Mayor. Any other comments? Sadly, in this screen mode, I don't see everybody's faces. So if you're waving at me, I can't see you.
I like the Vice Mayor's suggestion of doing it one at a time, but I don't really see options to vote on.
Okay.
Basically being asked to confirm what has been presented here.
Fair enough. Yeah, what are the pieces we're going to vote on, right?
I don't know. I guess it's because when I went down to City Hall and looked at everything, it looked like there were some options in there. But why don't we, I'd rather do a maybe vote piecemeal, but let's finish the presentation and maybe it is simpler than I thought.
But Mayor, if I could jump in here real quick, I think Councilmember Holibur is correct. Since we've been through this and it's design build, really the objective is checking in with the city council, making sure that, you know, and confirming with the city council as we're progressing, landscape material finishes that we're proceeding as envisioned by the city council. So that's really the objective.
So the objective, City Manager, the objective is the whole picture?
Yeah, and any fatal flaws that you see or anything that you have questions? And it just, you know, yeah, confirming that in the design build, as we're moving forward, the process, we're keeping the city council informed and up to date and that, you know, we're informing you and making sure that everyone's in agreement and that, you know, we're staying with what was envisioned.
Okay, so this is what I'm going to have us do. Before we get too much farther into the building, I have some questions about what you've just gone through. But I'd like to open it up to council before me. So Vice Mayor, did you have any questions about what we've just been through?
I do not, thank you.
Okay.
Ms. Mayor?
Thank you, Councilman Holibur.
No questions at this time.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Fung?
Yeah, I was just going to say, I was just going to say that, you know, since the vision was already in place and right now it's just reconfirming some of the things, some of the details. So as we go through, you know, each and every element through the presentation, we can make our recommendations as it goes through. And then in the end, when the architect and the designer get all of our feedback, then we can just do one motion and approve it.
Okay. But any comments right now, Mr. Fung, on what you've seen?
It sounds fine, but just a quick question for the landscape architect. We've got swall where we're handling all these water issues, do we not? And they tend to be lower, you know, in terms of ground?
Did you say swale?
Yes.
Bioswells.
I think the bioswale is that light green area, but I could be wrong.
Those are stormwater treatment areas. You know, we're kind of on the hilltop here. So we have slopes away from the building in most directions, probably the shallowest of which is on the arrival side. But we are sloping away from the building out into the parking lot into catch basins, which then go underground to the stormwater treatment areas. So there's no swales per se, but we are routing pavement water and roof water to those two basins.
Okay, so we got a, I see a catch basins up on the top of the screen here towards, you know, two-fifth of the screen from the left. Is that one of those?
Yes, the kind of gray-green areas, there's a teardrop shape above the community room terrace, and then there's a triangular shape with soft corners below that. Jane, can you point to those? Yes, thank you. They're shallow, they're shallow depressions, you know, that have some ponding depth and some freeboard depth to allow water to slow down there before it breaches the ponding depth and goes off to the storm system.
Got it, okay. And then they're much lower than the foundation pad, I imagine, right?
Uh, they are.
Elevation-wise?
Yes, they're down a bit, correct.
Would they be lower than the bottom of the foundation?
Yes, I believe so. The the soft triangular one is down about six feet from the building. And the the teardrop shape on the top side of the page is also down. There's a slope there, you know, approaching three to one, and that's nestled into that hillside. So they are both down from building finished floor and from bottom of slab.
Okay, so that'll give us some protection from rising water table. Okay, thank you.
Welcome.
So let me see if I understand. The two light green areas are not full bioswells.
They're stormwater treatment areas, so they're vegetated and they're meant to take a ponding depth of about 12 inches.
Okay, and then after that, it'll just slowly flow into our storm drain system. We don't have the cistern anymore?
There's no cistern. These, they slow down the water and it can infiltrate there. If it, if the storm is such that it ponds beyond 12, it'll funnel off into the storm drain.
Okay, okay. My questions, going backwards. I was the councilperson that liked things to be less modern looking and a lot of the outside lighting is ultra-modern. Also, Group Four did take us on a tour. And one of the things that I most loved from that tour was looking at the bollards along the parking lot, so at the west side of the building. And the bollards used down in Palo Alto were both functional, but artistic, and also acted as a seat. They used these really lovely sculptural owls that had lights, protected people from cars crashing into them and provided seating, and they were used as such by people waiting to get picked up there. But it looks like now what we have are cylinder metallic ultra-modern things. Is there any chance to come up with a more artistic, even if we have to fundraise for it, a more artistic look to that?
So Mayor, if I could jump in here, I mean, there is. Just with budget, though, we don't have the opportunity to do that. But in the future, if we do want to fundraise and do some public art and use the bollards, we can certainly then incorporate those and replace the bollards.
So part of what I've been asking City Manager and asking Recreation Director Mackenzie is, or Brady, is where are those dollar amounts so that we can start doing some fundraising? And because I'm the liaison to both our Culture Arts Committee and our Community Enhancement Committee, both of those groups want to help fundraise, but we keep waiting on those dollar amounts. And I hate for us to buy something and then, wow, suddenly we're successful at fundraising and we have to throw away these straight bollard drop-off poles for something else and and get in something that actually enhances our experience. Right now, none of this has gone to the Culture Arts Committee to look for any potential art installations at all. And I just would like in the future to start looping them in so that they can start planning for that.
Mayor, you had mentioned before that you had some contacts with fundraising that you might be able to come forward with this.
Well, definitely right now, looking at the specimen trees, but still waiting for dollar amounts. You can't go fundraise when you don't know the dollar amounts. So and I know, and and maybe it's not on the agenda tonight, but I know that the city has taken on a contract to help us identify our funding needs. And so I might be just a little bit before the cart right now. I'm just telling you, I I don't like those. I don't like the light poles. I think they're way too modern. I work in the environmental field and some of the emails I'm getting from a whole new profession trying to reduce light pollution. I I'll go offline and we can talk about that, but to me, these are very modern. So I'm disappointed. Everything else I like, but that I'm disappointed.
Yes, so Mayor, if I may, in terms of the light standards, we we're using the same ones that are at the library. And and that is something that we made a decision to kind of carry that theme from what is in the library parking lot over to the the Recreation Center. So there's some consistency within our municipal buildings and theme.
It's funny you should say that, given that I live a block away from there, how horribly light polluted the library parking lot is. There's just more light than is needed there. And there are people that live near these functions and have to, you know, make sure they've got thick drapes to block out the light from our parking lots. And that's something that environmental design is moving away from, too much light. I'm not saying no light, but too much light.
So to stay on track, you're regarding, I mean, we will look at, we will look at different shields and things like that to to deflect the light from the neighborhood.
I'll just mention that these all are cut-off fixtures that they don't push light up into the sky. We have worked carefully to cite these, especially the parking lot poles, so that they point into the project and away from neighboring residential.
Okay. You just wanted our opinions. Right now, I'm not happy with any of that. And I would have wished that the plantings would have gone, at least run the ideas past the Community Enhancement Advisory Committee. We learned this through the plantings at City Hall, that we have some people who are knowledgeable with natives and knowledgeable with Mediterranean plants. And when we don't use our own community groups, our own city committees, we're we're missing an opportunity there. So in the future, please try to run this stuff past them. Now it seems like it's too late. But I do like the maples.
Yeah, I I mean, I I think time is of the essence for the meeting tonight, but we did have, you know, community working groups and a series of before I came on board and as I came on board, various community members that were part of a design working group and and also various subcommittees. So, yeah, we are moving down a project now where we're committed to stay on schedule and and deliver the Recreation Center within budget and as envisioned. But your point about the bollards and upgrades and that type of thing is well taken. And as we launch in our fundraising and get pricing, you know, we will bring that back to the city council.
I I appreciate that, City Manager. Again, I'm the council member that has been pretty unhappy with not our contractors right now, but with the previous process and how it was pretty much jammed down, me as a council member and having very little say in it. And really, only at the end when our backs are against the wall. So I get it, but, you know, at at least as soon as possible, get us the fundraising dollars. So I I'm the last of the council members. I think, Jane, that means you can go or or Mr. Davis, if that's your part, go to the internals, the inside of the building.
Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna, we're gonna talk about the the exterior here a little bit. And I'm just going to quickly go through these renderings. You can go ahead and click. Thanks, Jane. So again, just to give you a sense of what we're, what William is going to go over, we're going to talk about the exterior building materials. And the building, for the most part, is pretty simple and we think that's good. Again, I I think we've we've tried pretty hard and and I think with some with with success, along with the Design Committee, to hold on to the Group Four concept. And so our major accent material is the stone. We introduced the wood in the ceiling area, so you can kind of see that. And of course, glazing. We have a a nice glass that we've picked out with bronze accents in the mullions. And then we have cement plaster. And the cement plaster has a couple of colors. There's a light color and then a darker accent color. And you can see a little bit of that on the classroom wing in this drawing. Let's go to the next rendering. And so here, again, you can see how we've added stone. You can see the the top parapet, how that's a little darker stucco color. And of course, some of the stucco accents in between the windows. You can go to the next rendering, please. This is from Lincoln. And again, we're showing how that the stone kind of wraps and works as kind of the bookends for the project and what it also, you can get a sense of the stucco.
Y'all, if you want to like, if I could push you some stuff, I'm like, it's a little bit of a grumble jump.
I'm sorry, I, we've got someone, they need to mute themselves. Elaine, can you mute the public? My apologies, Mr. Davis.
Okay, no, it's Clarence is on the phone right now. Let's see here, go ahead, you can click to the next one. Okay, and then this is the, of course, the big community meeting room and that that plaza area that Zach was going over previously. And again, I think this room has turned out really nice and we're going to show you some views on the interior in a bit. But again, real simple materials, stone, the stucco, the wood, and then some accent colors in the cement plaster. So if you click to the next one, William, if you could walk us through those materials?
Sure, I'd be delighted to. So I hope everybody's had a chance to go down to City Hall and see, actually pick up and touch these materials, because I think it's a really nice palette. And I'll just start from the upper left and move across and then go down to the bottom. But on the upper left, we have a an image of the stone, which is Glossfagus Rock is the company. And it's their, it's a locally quarried stone there and it's using their desert blend colors, which go from pink to an orange to sort of a yellow cast. And it's will have a split face finish, which will have a bit of a rugged look to it, which I think will be quite nice. The the stone planks themselves will be four inches high by 36 inches long. And as you saw in the previous renderings, they are used as a wainscot in a lot of areas and then also some full-height walls, accent walls. So along with that material, another, the more colorful materials is the wood, which is the cross-laminated timber or CLT. And that will be used, you'll be able to see it on the lobby roof on the inside, leading to the outsides, very similar to that image there. And it's a combination of spruce and pine and fir wood that's grown in Canada. And it'll be really exciting because that the process of installing the CLT will go quite quickly. So that'll be really nice when that's added to the project. And then next is the glazing, which is in order to meet the strict Title 24 energy requirements, we're using solar band 90, which is a UV coating on the glass. So it does have that coating to stop heat gain, but at the same time, we've used a glass with that coating that is as clear as possible, which I think is great. And then the mullions that will be framing that glass will be a dark bronze finish, quite similar to the dark brown paint color that's on the bottom. And then there's an exterior deck on the second level. And that will have pedestal pavers, which will cover the waterproofing. And those pavers will be a warm, it's called champagne is the color, but it's a a warm gray with some exposed aggregate, which I think is quite elegant. And then lastly, on the top is the roofing, which is a medium brown color and it has these accent ribs on it to make it look like a standing seam metal roof, but have work as a great base for the solar panels that will be added to this roof. Be much easier, it'll protect it and I think work well with that. And then finally, on the bottom of the page are the paint colors for the cement plaster. So we've got the main cement plaster color on the left, which is a a warm beige. It's got a, it's got just a hint of pink, which is a bit hard to see, but it stops it from looking purely in the yellow range. And then we've also got the accent plaster color, which is a bit darker and a bit more vibrant. And then lastly, as I mentioned previously, we've got the metal paint color, which is a dark brown there. So that concludes the presentation of the exterior materials of the building. And after this, we can go to the inside of the building. So it might be a good place to stop if anybody has any questions.
Okay, council again, because I cannot see all of your faces. I see Councilwoman Papen, if you can just somehow raise your hand, I can call on you. Thank you, go ahead, Councilwoman Papen. Councilwoman Papen, you've got your hand up? You may be muted.
Sorry, I have to mute everyone just so then we don't, I would have to manually unmute everyone now.
It's Councilwoman Papen can't unmute herself?
No, she cannot, but I am giving her access to unmute herself.
Excellent, thank you, thank you, Elaine.
Yeah, it's like, thanks, Elaine, gee.
We just don't want to get.
Yeah, I get it, I get it. I'm just sitting here going, I can't unmute. Could you go back to that last palette and show us where those colors are going to be, the last three?
Yes, so it might be easiest if we look at the this rendering, for example, yes. So in this, you're seeing a lot of all three of the, well, you're seeing the primary color and the accent color. But in other places of the building, there'll be more of the primary color. So the lighter beige color is the color on the, which was is the primary color. And then the darker color is used below the windows and above the windows as well, and then that band at the top of the building. So this was a rendering we did a little bit earlier before we looked, before we had the opportunity to look at the actual stone sample and look at what colors worked well, get some big paint chips. And so you'll notice that the tones are slightly different than they are in this rendering.
Yeah, I'm a little concerned about the top band. I, for some reason, thought that was going to be darker all around instead of just the very top accent. I don't have any prior things to compare it to. Somehow I thought it would finish off the top if the top band was somewhat darker.
So at the very.
This is Clarence, if I could just, Councilmember Papen, I know we we had a lot of discussion about that and I do remember that. One of the things we did do is we we thought there should be a difference between what we call the parapet cap, which is a dark, dark brown at the very tippy top of the of the edge. And then we transitioned down to just a slightly lighter color. What happened there, we made it darker, we tried to carry that same dark brown color and it made the building really feel top-heavy. So we thought something a little lighter was better. Now, one of the things that's important to note is that, and I think we discussed this too, once we get the building up and it's and it's ready to be painted, we're going to do some real big brushouts of these colors. And I think we agreed that we should all be out at the site when that happens, because the colors that you see in these renderings versus the colors you see on the board and then the fact that we're looking at it over a computer screen, it's really, it's not fair. So we want to judge it out in the sunlight and at the site, so we will do that. But again, the the basic concept here is that we have two accent colors on the stucco and we know that they're going to be, there's going to be a contrast. How much of a contrast, we're, again, I think we want to test that on the site.
Okay, yeah, thanks, Clarence. Okay, I wonder if you can't have two of the dark, you have it at the very tip-top and then just that other top, the thinner band at the top.
Oh, I see, yeah, maybe so.
I wonder what that would look like.
Well, that's easy to test, we can do that. I I think that would be preferable than that sort of, that real wide strip up at the top. That's what was looking real heavy to us. So if you you let us test that, we'll we'll run that by you.
I would greatly appreciate it, thank you, sir, or get muted out, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Councilwoman, Councilman Fung.
Fung, you're unmuted.
Yep, thank you, Elaine. So Clarence, on the, you know, sort of the top end there, we're just on that discussion. It seems like we've got quite a bit of overhang on the right-hand side of that roof and then why was it not extended throughout? Why was it not extended throughout? I mean, it seems almost like if we were to extend. The overhang of that roof throughout the left hand side and the fronts such as this, uh would give it a much more uniform look.
Yeah, so they're actually, there there are two very different construction types there. Um can we go to the rendering that's more at the oblique corner? All right, so what what's happening here with these overhangs? That's where we're using the CLT, the uh cross laminated timber. And we're using that to sort of extend over the the parapet or the rather, the face of the building. Where you're seeing just a parapet, that's where we have, we have a flat roof. Behind the building, it's just a different roof system. This was something that was part of the original concept. Uh well before we took over, so we were trying to honor the original concept. So these lantern ideas, that's that's what you're seeing here. We actually uh ended up eliminating, I think, one of them. But for the most part, we tried to keep the keep most of the basic design intact, so. Again, we we're only using cross laminated timber where you can see it and.
The exposed beam you're talking about?
I'm sorry?
The exposed beam that is that it's uh candlelightering out.
That's correct, right. So it's over the main spaces, so we have it over the lobby, we have it over the seniors lounge area, and then we have it again over the main. Community meeting room area.
Yeah, it it seems to me that the overall theme here is that there is a big. Uh relatively bold. Um darker line along the roof. Uh and that the back of the building didn't seem to follow through that design element. Uh it almost seems like it makes more sense for that uh for that. What you call it?
You know, I'll tell you, we 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 could, we could come up with twenty more designs too.
I'm sure you do. Right, it's obviously where here where we are. Not trying to ask you to redesign the whole thing here.
Yeah, I think this is where we are. That's right. I think you got it right.
From a color scheme perspective, right, uh on the top of that, of the edge of that roof, could that be? Could that follow the same color as the rest of the roof line?
When you say the edge of the roof, I'm uh, maybe Jane, if you could take your cursor, are you talking about the stucco area?
Yes. Where the cursor was, yes.
And what's your idea? What's your idea, sir?
Is that is that stucco or is that what is that?
That is stucco, correct.
So it's just a stucco cap?
It's not a stucco cap, there's a there's a metal cap at the parapet top.
Okay. Okay, I guess I see something, because I see something sticking out there.
Yeah, and and that's and that's a different kind of relief that's built out, but that is stucco as well.
And that's what Gina is recommending we test is a darker brown.
Yeah.
Which would be another way of tracking that dark brown.
That's right, if we can keep that consistency on that color along the rest of the overhang.
Yes.
Look a lot more uniform.
Right.
At least it looks like we are, you know, it's it's well thought out from the beginning. Uh and also, the second question is, you know, I see two tone stucco with stucco uh with stucco breaks, you know, along where the glazing lines are. Are the stucco painted or are they pigmented?
No, it's it's all painted.
It's all paint?
It's all painted.
So they all go on, you know, the earth tone color and then they paint darker. On certain area, on, you know, the top and the bottom of the glazing.
Correct.
I see. Okay. Smooth stucco?
No, it has a texture to it. It has a texture to it.
It's got a texture to it?
Yeah, okay, yeah.
Okay.
You you look perplexed, witness.
I'm, yeah, it's uh. I I don't know how that is going to look like in the end, really. I mean, if you have stuccos that are painted. Um it's going to not look very.
Very, very what?
It's anyway, I'm I'm going to reserve that. Um, okay, all right. So I have for now.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Pappin, I see your hand is up. Was that a new question? Would you mind if I check in with Mr. Holibur and uh Vice Mayor Leva? Councilman Holibur, any comments? Gee, Elaine, maybe we don't have to keep everybody muted anymore so that they can. How about Vice Mayor Leva does have her hand up if Ruben's waiting to come back to us?
Uh I'm curious about the windows. Do do the frames of the windows have to be black?
So they're they're actually a dark bronze. Um they're not black. Um I know it, they look really dark. I'm sorry?
Is there a choice with the the quality of windows we have? Is there a choice? Because that's really trim.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear your last comment. That's really.
Well, the the windows are trimmed to me. So, yeah, the color.
Oh, the wind, uh the the color of the mullions. William, can you go back to, or I'm sorry, now William, Jane, can you go back to our materials board? There we go. So um if you look at the second row of images, uh the one between the piece of glass and the. What looks like concrete, we have something labeled there called mullions.
Right.
So all of the trim pieces in the windows are going to be roughly that color. They're what is called a dark anodized bronze color.
And I will say that we've we've worked with um. Uh Tom and Darcy and Jane and Mackenzie, and that's one of the parts that they're. Of the exterior palette that they've shown a lot of excitement about is that they feel that darker darker brown is quite elegant.
Perfect. So that i- i- and and I'm not trying to criticize, I'm just trying to say that that is a color. That is actually a color that goes in as trim. So Gina, if you want to, or sorry, Councilmember Pappin. We we might consider that as one of the trim, the trim colors or one of the palettes for the colors.
So the dark brown on the top of the building and what we might use for that brow is a color to match that anodized dark bronze.
Right, thank you.
Oh, I see what you're getting at. Yeah, we could test that, yeah.
That's my point.
Got it. That's actually the color that we were proposing on the parapet cap, so. I think we're we're in, we're heading in the same direction.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, Councilman Holibur, last chance. If not, go ahead, Councilwoman Pappin.
No comments at this time, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman.
Matt, please just have confirmation as to this seating wall in the. Back patio where the grand room is. I didn't see that. It seemed to be covered by a lot of foliage.
In the rendering, it may not, I don't think it, I don't believe it's in the rendering that we showed of that side of the building. That was an earlier rendering.
Yeah, it is. It's not shown the way uh SWA has updated the design, correct?
Okay, we, yeah, the council needs to see that. I think that's a big part of that back patio. Area, so.
Okay.
Well, Clarence, uh it it is on the site plan and then that.
Yeah, why don't we, why don't we go to the site plan real quick?
That was a comment that the council member made about skateboarding.
Right. One more.
I mean, that was a picture right there.
Oops, go, yeah, right there. Yeah, so again, what uh. Councilmember Pappin, is is your question, what is the color of the concrete that that wall is made of?
Well, exactly, I I had pictured the wall would be, yeah, oh yeah, where where are we on that wall? I mean, I thought it was going to go all the way around so that people could sit on it.
So so there's a little bit of change of design if the council recalls. So off of the patio, the light green area. Is grass and that that's to accommodate additional events and additional people. For outdoor seating or if we do have concerts, people can put their lawn chairs on the on the grass and uh spill off of the patio. And so the seating wall, uh Jane, if you can use your cursor and um. Show the council where the seating wall is. So you see those areas and then that allows for the open area in the middle. For people to spill out onto, and so we um will introduce outdoor uh fireplaces and and seating areas and that type of thing, so that's.
Okay, I'm I'm a little unclear on that and I'll have to ask Councilmember Holibur. I thought we had had the wall going all the way around so that when people were renting the grand hall slash patio, there was more um. You know, it increased the value to them instead of spilling off into the park. So.
It doesn't spill off into the park. This this was a slope, but now it's level and so that's um turf. That then people can use, but we we, that's why we're having this conversation. If there's a different direction, it it's not too late.
So now you're telling, if I may, so to clarify here, the patio then is this whole area is being lifted? Because there's a plan that goes down now. This is becoming confusing.
So uh Councilmember Pappin, if if I could, so right now, if you walk out those pairs of doors. From the room out to the, we'll call it the patio, that's all level. And then what you could continue to do is you could walk out onto that light green area and that's level as well. That's all grass. And what we did was we actually thought we were creating more leasable area for events by doing that. And the border now is that, see the magenta or the purple area? That closes off the quote, party zone, if you will, or the event zone. So you could have tables on the patio area, but there's this overflow area now onto the lawn area. And that was something that the city thought would be a good thing to be able to offer.
Okay, interesting. But isn't there still that or after the magenta, does it go down?
Yes, that's correct, about five feet. So from the genta on down to the pathway beyond, there's about a five foot difference.
How do we not lose people that may go over the edge there?
It's not that steep a slope. Um uh Zach could comment on the slope, but it's um it's a gradual slope with bushes in it, so you would. I mean, if the worst, you would fall into the bushes.
That that's correct. It's not, it's not a three to one slope here, it's like a five to one slope, but it's. It's contained by shrub material, you know, there is some containment here. And we think it's it's actually at quite a good height because you're you're kind of about a a person height above. You know, people who are circulating in the park below.
And that shrub, the shrubs will will grow to about three feet in height, correct?
About waist high, correct.
So there's quite a, you visually can see over to the park, but it's quite a barrier for people in the park.
Okay, I'm really confused now. The purple that you're calling magenta is an actual row, like a boxwood hedge?
It's a double row of lavender. But beyond this.
So people are going to step all over it then. They're going to be drinking alcohol here at a wedding and stepping all over that that lavender. Or falling over the lavender. I I'm not saying it's a bad idea, just might be nice to have a better visual.
When America gets some wild parties going, but.
Well, um I did grow up here. I remember what we were like as teenagers or young adults. Uh Ms. Pappin, you anything else? It it, we're moving along here, it's getting on to nine o'clock. Okay, I have a couple of questions then. The paint colors, going back to the slide of the front of the building, you're saying, and I, when I went in today, I took photos of. The colors that you had laid out in council chambers. I really like the darker colors, I like the darker windows, yay for that. I, it's a shame that we don't have the money to make those windows solar receptors, but we are the poor stepchild. The um. The light color. Uh if you could go back. To that front slide, I'm just worried that it's still a little light and I'm scrolling here to the paint colors from City Hall.
Forty eight through sixteen ninety four, that was your year, Dave.
Okay, yeah, it's the one, I'm sorry, my photograph doesn't say it, but it it showed the three paint slabs. So you're saying that in the picture that we're seeing, the colors are actually a little bit darker. Or at least the two lighter colors are a little bit darker than what we're currently seeing.
Jane, if you could go in the other direction to the um exterior sample board.
I actually like the darker, the wood is interesting. I don't know how it's going to change color over time. Are we planning on the wood? Laminate, changing color over time?
Our understanding is that it will um, it will gray a bit, but not significantly.
So it'll still, it'll stay in the brown palette then?
Yes, yes. So what we're trying to do is create enough contrast between that cross laminated timber and the. And the cement plaster color so that you see some contrast. And then likewise, something that harmonizes well with both those yellows and the pinks and oranges of the stone.
Okay, I, my preference is darker if we can. It makes it look a little less bloody contemporary, which I'm just not a fan of. Um the, I I kind of, looking at the one photograph that shows the back of the building, the view from Lincoln. It just to me, Tom, I'm sorry, every time I see it, it looks more modern. At least it's broken up. Again, I had hopes, especially in the youth, the um childcare area, that there's an opportunity for a mural or something to break up. To break up just how modern it looks. Um, you know, but I got overruled on that. Going back to the picture that Assemblyman, Assemblyman, I'm sorry, I've been at a training all day. Councilman Fung has uh pointed out. The um, the one that showed the beams underneath, it kind of looked like a side view going down the, there we go. So in this section, we've got beams up the front. I like it, it brings in the color of the windows. Then we go to the next. What used to be a lantern, it looks a little flatter now, but maybe that's just the view. It has a porch. And then there's no beams that stick out with it. Was that deliberate? And is that because now there's a beam running parallel to the edge of the roof? They're just, they're they're definitely two different looks.
Right, so you you're right, uh there's there's a transfer beam. That happens over the, what we would call the, at the top of the colonnade. Um it's a flat roof there, it is different. Um and again, what we're doing there is we're we're still using the cross laminated timber. And we're essentially extending it to give us some sun protection for that side of the building. Um and then if you were to go to the other end of the building, if you can go to the other rendering, Jane. Not that one, keep going, that one there. So again. This, the sloped roof occurs at the community meeting room and at the lobby. So in those two places, that's where. The architecture and the vocabulary are similar, but everything in between, there's a flat roof happening, so it's different.
And you think that it would look architecturally ugly if the beams continued on the flat roof? Some homage to the Spanish neighborhood that this is being built into?
No, I I don't think it would be ugly. What, there's a technical reason for that too. Right now, because that's a flat roof. Where we're not extending the beams, we can just carry the cross laminated panels. Out directly and then they can rest upon that one transfer beam. So it makes a lot of economic sense. Um because those aren't big glorious rooms like the lobby or the meeting room. You know, we're playing those spaces down a little bit too. So we're keeping the drama at the ends and then keeping it calmer in between. So it's it's not an ugly or beauty thing. It's it's kind of, kind of what makes sense to us from, you know, sort of the importance of the spaces. And the lobby space where you enter and the community meeting space uh seem to be the two biggest gathering areas. In the building, so we're.
I I understand your logic there. I hope that in the landscape plan in front of that. Balcony, which I think people will really enjoy. And at least when you're standing on the balcony, you'll look up and see beams, so it'll give you more of a homey feeling than the contemporary straight. Flat roof, but I sure as heck hope there's a tree in front of it to block that contemporary look. I mean, all too often, our Spanish homes here are being converted into contemporary modern. And as as someone who grew up here, I'm frankly insulted by it. I I. I hate it on there. So, you know, again, I got overruled on that, so let's move on to the other. The colors go darker if you can. I had one question on a, it was the last thing at council chambers. There's a really nice dark cement color and it has, it it's marked. And then it's matched with two others, and this might just be that you guys are seeing all the colors together. And then it's matched with two others, and this might just be that you guys are seeing all the colors together. Outside and we're seeing it inside a council chamber today on a dark rainy day. But I I like the darker color. So I, um, it's called the fitness and event patio. I really liked that color. But I liked it matched with the two other colors that weren't chosen. But you're saying that when it comes, when we get closer to that, we might have a little bit more say in how you colorize the cement? Or colorize the concrete?
Yeah, I I, yeah, I think what we're we're saying there, and this goes for the the stucco colors as well. We, we're gonna get a handful of samples done for us that we'll look at at the site. And that's when you can really get, start to get a sense of of the real color.
I agree.
We're trying to, we're just trying to get in the neighborhood right now. And we we're not expecting you to make a decision based on something you're looking at under fluorescent light. On a rainy day. I mean, none of that is a, that's.
Excellent. I I'm very happy to hear that. The last comment I had, and this almost goes back to landscaping. When we talked about the front of the building with the trellis now that's going towards the daycare center. We, I at least, had talked about the potential of adding climbing plants, whether it's wisteria or something else that may drop its leaves in the winter time or not, but at least it adds some living to that. But that, I didn't see that in the landscaping plans. Is that something that's been thrown out? Is that a cost function? What's what's the issue there?
This is Zach. Um, I think it's a lovely idea. We we haven't talked about it before, frankly.
Okay, um, I'm very into passive solar, so I get leaves that drop their leaves in the winter time to reduce heating costs. I get it. And if we can do a little bit of that and we can use this to educate the public on passive solar, that's great. The cement wall that that Councilwoman Papin was talking about here at the end of the community room. I am hoping that we can colorize that cement too, and it's not gonna be gray. Not a fan of gray. So if you're gonna say yes, then I'm happy and I'll shut up.
So a again, I, yeah, I think, again, remember, this is something that we're still waiting for the city to uh, give us a go-ahead on, but it could be colored concrete, no doubt about it.
It just seemed to make sense there, and I agree completely with Councilwoman Papin that uh, whether we intended or not, skateboarders are gonna find those benches. They're gonna love them and that concrete will get chipped up. And.
I I think Zach's got that one figured out.
Good. Well, I look forward to hearing that. With that, I'm done. Uh, Councilwoman Papin, I see your hand raised and then we can go to the inside.
Yeah, I'd just like to remind the mayor, this was a community-based project, so. I understand you're unpleased with some of this, but the community had a big part in what um, the project looks like. So we're at a point now where we have.
I'm not asking to change it, Councilwoman Papin, but in reality, it's been changing all along after community input and all along after what we voted on for budgetary reasons. I get it. It doesn't mean I have to like it.
Well, and you don't have to keep expressing your.
I certainly can, Gina. You have no problems expressing things that you don't like. I have the same right. Um, staff, please move into the interiors of the building. My one comment on the interiors and the elevator. Why a gray ceiling when we're trying to stay away from gray? It's my only comment. It was in the samples down at City Hall.
So the gray, um, uh, Jane, correct me if I'm wrong, but I imagine that sample is the laminate that will be on the walls of the elevator. So the ceiling will be a, will be, um, a translucent panel that will have lights behind it.
The sample said ceiling, but that's fine. If that's gonna evolve, that's cool.
Jane, do you know what that ceiling sample was by chance?
Can we stay focused on the agenda, please, on what?
We're we're on the inside of the building now. I just went first. Vice Mayor Oliva, staff, go ahead and give the presentation.
Yeah, if I may, I think, William, you are correct. I think it's the panels on the elevator itself, not not the ceiling.
Thank you.
So William, why don't you stay with us? William's gonna take you through, uh, some interior lighting. For the main spaces and then into the community meeting room. Go ahead, William.
Yes.
So next slide?
Next slide, yes. Yes, okay. So, uh, we have a number of fixtures in the building, but we wanted to show you some of the special fixtures in, um, the lobby and some of the other, uh, main meeting places. So, um, in the, so starting with the lobby in the lower left, lower right-hand corner, uh, you can see a ring fixture and we're gonna have these fixtures in three different sizes and there'll be a number of them. I think there are three different, um, collections of these three fixtures. So we'll have, and they'll be a different height. So we'll have a bit of a sculptural look, which I think will be quite dramatic in that double-height space, which will be nice. And then next to that is the game room, um, in the lower left-hand corner where we'll have uh, these discs and we'll have the opportunity for a custom bright color here, which will make that space a little bit more fun for a youthful environment. Um, the senior lounge upstairs will have the fixture in the upper right. Um, and, um, there'll be a whole series of these in the room. And then in the community room, we've got the linear fixtures, um, which work nicely with the linear elements of the ceiling. And then also when we get to the renderings, you'll see an opportunity for an upgrade to go with a very large uh, larger scale as well, a disc fixture, a ring. Um, so this is the, uh, interior rendering of the community room and what I love most about this space is the amount of glass that's in it. So I think that, um, addition to, of extra glazing on the project, um, really, really shows what a special space this will be with the views out to the park, which is quite nice, sort of bringing the inside, uh, bringing the outside in. Um, but what we wanted to focus on here was just showing you some of the elements, particularly the the light fixtures in the room and how they work with the um, the beams that soar across the ceiling and then out, um, to create that brow on the building. And then also, uh, instead of exposed ducts in this room, we're gonna have four very large ceiling fans that have, uh, wood blades. And they'll help distribute the air more efficiently in the room so that you only have, uh, sidewall diffusers.
Sorry, William, if I may, just stop me for thirty seconds there. Uh, what you're showing there on the, uh, on the exposed beam, it looks like an I-beam rather than the CLT?
So there are I-beams that are holding up the CLT. So the yellow color on the ceiling is the CLT. And then that's being held up by those, uh, dark brown I-beams.
Oh, so the exposed beam that is kind of levering out the building is not the CLT so much. Well, I think, I think they are because they're they're they made up the under eve, if you will, right? And then the exposed beam that is sticking out of their actual, the actual I-beams.
That's correct. So the CLT does extend to the exterior of the building. What's that?
They are the under eve.
Yes. So that you you have the I-beams extending from the inside to the outside and the CLT extending from the inside to the outside.
And are these the light fixture we're gonna get? The the drop light fixture?
These are the, um, these are the linear option and then there is an option to to upgrade these fixtures if the city would like. Uh, which is the next slide, um, which shows what the room would look like with, um, there there'd be twelve totals, though some of them are cut off, but there'd be twelve of these ring disc fixtures, um, which could be used as well. So that's the one difference between these two.
And and do you need us to to tell you tonight to to go with way, or is that something that will come to us later?
Uh, Tom, I think basically at this point, you just wanted to get a reaction as it is an additional cost, um. If there was a preference, is that correct?
Yes, correct. We, Mayor, we would like confirmation and direction from the city council on these items.
Okay, thank you.
We're not gonna have time to come back and and, you know.
Okay.
Get the center open by May, you know, June for, um, summer camp. We we need to stand, so we are looking for consensus this evening.
Council, do you want to have him finish? Mr. Gordon, do you want to finish your presentation and then we'll come back? Or do you want me to get everybody's opinion right now?
So I believe this is the last slide before the final section. So I think this is another stopping point.
Okay, um, Mr. Uh, Councilman Holliver, your thoughts on the long at versus the round?
Personally, I prefer the the linear light, uh, fixtures and if it's a cost savings. The better. Wha- what is the cost difference approximately?
It's approximately eighty thousand dollars. Uh, and eighty thousand dollar add to the project to use the circular fixtures.
I think that confirms my choice, uh, preference for the linear beam. Linear light fixtures, please.
Councilman Fung, at least right now, just on the light, the choice of lighting, where are you sitting?
For eighty thousand dollars. I mean, I really would wanna see the light, it sample itself, but for eighty grand. Uh, I cannot really justify going for the circular. But I I suppose there's gotta be more than two options here, don't we?
Thank you, Mr. Fung. Councilwoman Papin.
I would go the linear. I'm deeply concerned about this fan situation though. I've never seen those before. What's that gonna do? As far as temperature, how are we gonna be able to rent out a room that may be hot? You're relying on fans, uh, you know. This is something new. I wish staff would have mentioned to us before.
If I may jump in here, this is why we're having the meeting. So this is an option that the architect is coming up with. So Clarence, I don't know if you have the original design?
We, uh, hmm, we removed the slide, so I I don't, but let me explain just briefly what fans do. So, so Councilmember Papin, if you look on the wall, see the guy with the blue suit, he's close to the wall there. And if you look up high on the wall, you'll see these, what are registers in the wall. What's gonna happen there is the air is gonna be forced out through these registers. And then the fans, quiet fans, they will mix the air. So the condition of the space will be the same compared to if we were, instead of having the registers. Imagine ducks that are about eighteen inches to two feet in diameter. Running parallel with the steel beams all the way across the room. We would have three or four of those. And then at the, at intermittent points along the register, along the ducts, we would then blow out air from those. So one of the things this does is, one, it's a greener idea to do what we're doing. It's less energy. It's also actually quieter than the air going through the ducts. And we thought that the ducks were a little bit of an eyesore compared to the way this looks now. So that's why we're we're suggesting this idea instead.
So it still doesn't explain the balance of air circulating through the room. If you're on the window side leading out to the park. Could get very heated. Uh, you know, everybody's been to an event. You don't wanna be under the air duct. You don't wanna be under the fan. We're looking for even temperature throughout the room. So that's why I'm a little surprised here to suddenly see fans, uh, you know.
So so the original sign, I think, design, as Clarence said, had had air duct, exposed air ducts, which in restaurants and buildings and have seen that. So, um, so this was a, an option that we were just actually talking about over the last week and and are presenting at the city council. You remember, this is a design bill, right? So we can go back to the air ducts. We can, um, take the architect's advice.
But but this is one where we really do, uh, the project is moving forward and it would be great to have a decision on this one.
There you go. You got the ducks up. Good job.
I was gonna say, Jane, do you have the?
All right.
What's more effective? Yes, the big silver fright.
Our mechanical engineer is saying that the fans are more effective at mixing the air.
Well, perfect. Then we know the answer then.
Yeah, let's kind of go back to order here. So Councilwoman Papin, couple more comments and I've got Annie. And then Ruben and, um, then back to Anders.
I think we can do slightly better on the linear than what's there now, but the eighty thousand circular is not to my take.
Okay, um, Vice Mayor?
So what's the, what's the difference in the lighting? Like if you're sitting at a table there playing cards? Or if you're at a wedding, can you dim all of the above? Um, can you read your cards that if you're playing cards at the table? I mean, from round to linear, what what is the advantage of either?
So the, the, the flick candle levels, that is, the level of the light will be uniform when they're all on. Whether they're circles or linear. So they're all laid out in such a way to get the appropriate amount of light to each of the areas. Um, in terms of how they're controlled, I don't know exactly how that's laid out, but typically, you wouldn't have everything on one bank, but they would probably be alternated in some way. Um, and we could, and we can get further information on that. So there will be a way to control the lights on different circuits. Um, but just in terms of the the task lighting that's required for all the events. Um, whether they're circles or linear, they they'll they'll all perform the same.
Because like if you, if you guys remember the old rec center, which is quite modern, by the way. Um, the, the, to get an ambiance in the room where you wanted to have like dim lighting, you can never achieve that. So if that could be achieved for rental, um, you know, parties and such, I think that's really important. So if it makes no difference whether it's round or linear, um, to achieve a lighting, um, a lighting, uh, how do you say that? A lighting atmosphere, a lighting ambiance? Um, I would, I I I wouldn't spend eighty thousand dollars for whether it was round or straight. Does that make sense?
Yes.
But the ambiance is very important. So if we can dim those. Um, I think that's the difference of having a room that we can rent out for different caliber. Compared to like a rec center gym ambiance.
Right. Um, my sense is that, yes, everything is dimmable. So that shouldn't be, that's not a tall order here.
Yeah, so if it's just a look for rounders or straight, yeah, whatever.
Okay.
Question before we go back around. The picture that you're showing us right now doesn't have the fans. How would the fans look with linear lighting?
We have.
That was the first, first one.
Oh, okay. Um, I like that a whole lot better than that big tube running through it. I have a house that I cool with an attic fan and another fan to avoid having to use air conditioning. Would the fans also help us achieve net zero more easily than running a big HVAC system?
By using less energy, it's easier to achieve net zero.
And you're saying the, now these fan, the fan that you're showing here is a pretty modern cor- sort of air wing design. Do you have a concept? I I would imagine these are commercial fans, so they're gonna take a lot more running than, say, a household fan. I'm with you on the fan idea, guys. I'm just trying to get a look. I I I have to admit, now that I see it with the verticals, I like it better than the rounds. The rounds are kind of jarring against all the linear lines, but I do like the fans. And I do like, uh, Vice Mayor Oliva's idea that, are these dimmable? And are they gonna be set up so that maybe you can turn certain banks on and not other banks? So you don't have to have as much light. But you might want a little bit more light.
And so yes to all of the lighting control questions.
Okay. And the glass along this wall, which will get morning light and a little bit of mid-afternoon light, have we looked at that? I mean, the way the building is usually by mid-afternoon, it's not gonna have any direct light. But the wall that will go towards Laurel, that will get some afternoon light, or is it shaded?
It's shaded. It's, uh, northeast, um, direction. So by the afternoon, it should, um, it should be in shape.
Maybe we're talking two different walls. You're saying, I'm looking at, see where the man in the blue suit is, the opposite end of the building. Those windows right there, those are south, by southeast? I'm just, you know, if if they're shaded, then there's less of that hot heat coming through the window.
Well, I I think the window design that the architect has specked also eliminates heat coming through the windows, correct, Clarence or William?
Yeah, that's, that's right. But again, you know. Yeah, that's, that's right. But again, so to answer your first question there, we did study this. All of this has been put through our computers and we looked at daylighting and solar gain analysis. So all of that's been factored in along with the mechanical systems and we think it's gonna be a pretty comfortable space. We have everything we need there to control the temperature inside.
Excellent. Okay. Uh, going back to the beginning, Councilman Holibur.
Okay. Um, I know that the room partition is not included in the base budget. It's an ad alternate, but uh, I know there were some concerns about whether it's even feasible because the roof slants up. Is that something that you're still looking to include in, in the final product?
Go ahead, William.
That is feasible. So you can actually see in this rendering a flat header right behind the, um, second fan or the middle fan. And that creates the, um, the top for which the, uh, the door slides across. So that, that, um, wedge up above that, that header, which is all dark brown, that will, that's solid and that will, you know, stay that way all the time. But when the door is brought into the room, that, it will create a, a solid wall.
Okay. And, uh, I don't know if we're, if there are any other slides about the other interior designs of the building? Have you covered that already? Uh, I'm just looking at some, some of the renderings that were included in the printed, uh, materials, the staff report. Um, do you have those in the presentation?
These are the only interior renderings we have, which are the ones of this room.
Okay. I, I'm just looking at what was included in the staff report. There were some, I, I, I don't think they're, they're not rendered. They're like stock photos of the staff opens office, um, break room, first floor.
Oh, those are images of light fixtures.
Okay.
And so they're not necessarily in the context, even in the context which they would be used, but they, they give you a sense of their scale by putting them in a space supposed to having just enough.
Understood. I was, I was a little confused. I was wondering if that was, uh, the, uh, design of what the office was going to look like, because it comes off as very sterile.
Yes, yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Sure. Glad to give that clarification.
Apologize for that.
Okay, thank you, William. Uh, just for sake of comparison, how many pieces of these, uh, linear lighting are we talking about in this room?
So I believe there are.
Eight right here now?
There are twelve fixtures total.
Twelve fixture total? And then how many of these circular would that be if you were to use circular?
Twelve fixtures as well.
Okay, so twelve fixture total. How much is each and every one of these linear lights?
Well, they're quite a bit less than the others.
I, I heard that, right? But the difference between those two, twelve fixtures are eighty thousand dollars. Sounds like there's a big difference on a per
Yeah. Who, who's divided eighty by twelve yet?
Six point six.
I'm sorry, what is it?
Six point six.
So, yeah, so for the circle, six and a half thousand dollars more per fixture.
Per fixture?
Yeah, yeah.
Just, just out of curiosity, how much is a per linear fixture?
I don't know.
They only know the difference, but I mean, I'm trying to figure out whether it is, you know, a pen, you know, a, a twenty thousand dollar light fixtures versus a hundred thousand dollar light fixture? Or is it, you know, a two hundred thousand dollar light fixtures versus two hundred and eighty thousand dollar light?
Yeah, yeah. Sadly, we don't know. I apologize. Um, one of the things we do know is that what you see right there, that's in the contract. So that's what's, that's what you get no matter what. And, and again, if we, if we were to quote, upgrade it to circles or something else, we're trying to share, share with you what is the additional cost. We can find out how much these cost. That's, that's easy to do. We just don't know that tonight.
And have we looked into, I mean, instead of having all these things dangling down from the ceiling, we haven't looked into a, uh, more of a recessed lighting type options?
Actually, we, we think this is probably the right way to do it. We, we want to set up a lighting plane, if you will. Um, we don't want to recess into the nice CLT. That's part of the structure. So we think this is the right position for the lights.
Okay, so you don't want to drill holes into the CLT?
Well, it's also the CLT is four inches thick. So if you were to put a recessed light, that would be about twelve inches. So it would stick up above the roof about eight inches.
I see. So the roof is not insulated?
It is. So it would be housed within the insulation of the roof. I'm not sure if there, depends on where the light fixture is of whether it be fully ins, inside the eight inches of insulation or not.
Councilman Fung, I think part of the problem is that we don't get into that level of detail, but city manager, is there a way to help Councilman Fung have access to that kind of stuff and he can dive into it with his experience?
Sure, I, but I, I think the architect is saying that, uh.
Right. I, I heard that. Yeah, it'll stick out or it'll stick into the insulation. Um, sadly, that's another one of those design decisions that have already.
Made much earlier on.
Yeah.
Alright, well, so.
I hear, I thought the same thing. Couldn't we do recessed instead of having more stuff kind of hanging out?
Well, remember, I mean, you know.
The things we wanna, we want to be careful of is we don't want it to look like a Long's drugstore, uh, with, you know, the lights sort of flush up against the ceiling. That's gonna look a little goofy. Um, so again, you know, we, we got this beautiful wood ceiling. We want to leave that kind of the way it is, keep it intact. And, uh, uh, again, this is, this is not a foreign idea, but these pendants are pretty handsome. And again, circles are linear. I think they're gonna both look great. But, uh, yeah, I think that's, I think that's where we are. We, we certainly don't want to recess anything into the wood, though.
Alright, well, so, and then as far as the fan goes, I, I'm not a, I'm not against having fans. The fans looks fine. They look somewhat modern, which I like. Uh, but you know, I'm looking at those registers on the right-hand wall. Uh, don't you have something a little bit more linear, longer, wider?
Not sure you can see scale quite at that odd angle there.
You could. I mean, just look at how wide the doorway is and how big that, that register is. I mean, I've seen registered, there are at least, you know, six, eight, ten feet long. That would look a lot more, um, contemporary.
So what I want to do is, yeah, we just want to make sure that we have the right amount of openings. So, uh, again, we'll work with the mechanical engineers on that. These were, these were put in here because we know roughly where they're gonna go. Um, if that's the exact size, I'm not real sure of that just yet. They're pretty, they're probably close.
Yeah, I, I think there's gotta be a better option. It looks almost like it doesn't belong there, you know?
Okay, well, we'll take a look at that.
Yeah. Uh, and using the fan as the way to mix the air, uh, that's, that's a good idea. That's not a bad idea, I think. You got a lot of exposed eye beam there. So you got, you know, somewhat of an industrial look. I guess linear light would work just as well, but yeah, without being able to see these lights in, uh, in, in real life and just imagining twelve pieces of these material and the difference is eighty thousand dollars. I, I gotta wonder the quality of these two compare between the linear light and the circular light. Um, how they would actually look in real life in terms of
Sure.
the quality of that, of that material.
Right.
Just concerned about that.
Yeah. And what we'll do is we'll, we'll gather this information for Jane and Tom. We'll find out what the cost of these are, just so you can make that comparison. Um, but, uh, we, we can get that, that, that's, again, we wanted to show you something that you, that's already in the contract in terms of the purchase price. So, so this is what's there today.
And is that the first time that the council have seen this?
I think so, at least in this kind of detail and at this point of discussion.
I thought I was new.
Okay. I, no, I'm right with you.
If I may jump in here, because we're running out of time. It's, it's.
Yeah.
My, and, and let me just remind everyone, we went out for Measure II. The voters did not pass it. We wanted to deliver a community center with Group Four. We were struggling along. Costs were increasing at ten percent annually. And so if we had more money, then yeah, we could do more things, but we're, you know, we're, we're really, as Clarence is saying, that, you know, this is, this is what's budgeted. We'll go back and we'll look at things. Uh, you know, and, and yes, ask Clarence. I'm constantly saying, hey, we need elegance, but we need, you know, we need to stay within budget and, you know, kind of going back and forth. And thi, this is the design build kind of aspects of this as well. And, and so the feedback is good. I think we, we've got it. We'll, we'll come back with the cost and maybe some other, uh, uh, you know, alternatives.
And I understand that, Tom. I understand exactly what you said. Uh, and that's why I asked my comment earlier. Cause, uh, you know, we tried to figure out what these twelve light fixture costs from a linear versus vertical standpoint with a total cost on, on these two options. And how that would compare to, because I know exactly what it would cost to do recessed light. And it seems like there's a big difference between the two. And I'm very, very cognizant about, you know, cost here. I understand.
Yeah, and I apologize. We don't have the cost this evening, but we'll get those from, uh, from the architect and, and get those to the city council. And if we need to come back at, at council's direction tonight, we can actually come back with this item, uh, in, in two weeks as well.
Okay, Mr. Fung, anything else? So I don't know if staff is.
Now, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Well, I think we're getting close. It is, it is nine, almost nine thirty. I heard at least three things where people had concerns. I don't know if staff was keeping a list. I heard Councilwoman Papin on the color along the edge of the buildings. I heard, uh, me for landscaping in terms of at least looking at, uh, some kind of vine on trellised areas to kind of soften how hard the walls are. We've got the light issue. Um, uh, we've got the, the, um, the, the cement seating wall. I don't, sorry, I don't have the right term. You pretty much, I think we agreed with your color schemes. What else do you need from us tonight? And I think you heard a linear more than a circular, but I think maybe Tom coming back to us with the cost of the lighting and the options might make it easier for council. Uh, it might make it easier for our new council member where, who has only been with us a couple of months.
Right. Um, no, I, I think you, I think you covered it. I feel like we're, again, we're, we're, we're pretty much there. We have a few tweaks here and there. We do have one more piece to share with you, uh, that we will go through really quickly. We'd love to get your thoughts on this too. Um, so this is kind of a new item that the, uh, that the design, uh, the, the design committee asked us to look at, and that is, how could we deal with donor recognition? And, uh, go ahead and click, please.
If I may, just to help with a little background. I mean, this actually is, is, the council has seen this before. Um, and this is kind of a, a measure twice, cut once discussion, uh, on a donor wall. So, uh, we wanted to run this by the council.
Well, full council. I don't remember seeing, I know we talked about it, but an actual location, I don't remember, but it's been months, so.
Okay. Alright, so, um, this all kind of goes back to, uh, maybe taking an opportunity to add a little more scale to this plaza that we have in the drop-off area, which we all think is really starting to look nice. And so we refer to these letters that spell out Millbrae. And go ahead and click. And what we did was we looked at various, various typefaces and we looked at the new logo and how the M works. And we found that this particular font seemed to work best. So when those letters spring out, they're about thirty feet long and they're about five feet high. Uh, go on to the next one, please. And where we see these placed, as they were in that drawing, they're right in front of the, the lobby area. This is where the design or I would say staff anyway, felt that this was the best place for this. So they're pretty prominent when you sort of arrive at the arrival court area. And the backdrop for these is a combination at the ground level is this lantern that Zach was sharing earlier. And then this, the stone, and then of course, the wood up above in the overhead. So next slide, please. And this is a sample of what those, what they start to look like. This is actually just up the street from our office. It's the, uh, Berkeley Architectural Museum and Pacific Film Archives. Uh, but they use these letters to, again, add a little more scale out in landscape area. Okay, next, please. But again, our task here was to look at donor funding ideas. And so you see that there's a little break in each one of the letters. And light will trace through those breaks, which would be a nice feature at night. But each of those panels that make up the little breaks is a donor recognition opportunity. So go to the next slide, please. So this is the letter L. And you'll notice here that each of those panels become an opportunity for a donor to be recognized. And depending on what level of donation is made, right, you get a larger plaque. And then those are mounted over what is an acrylic backing and the letter is internally illuminated. So you get this nice glow. And the idea was that when you walk up, when you arrive at the center, you say, oh, Millbrae. But then as you get closer to it, you know, well, who's made this possible? And you start to get a sense of, of the donor capacity and how that's come along. So next slide, please. Okay, you can go ahead and click through these. Again, this is, uh, gives you a sense of what that could look like when it all comes together. And, you know, there may be enough names to fill up this whole thing, which would be fabulous. And then at the same time, they don't have to be all filled. They could start to have different messages as well. So it's a donor opportunity, a donor recognition opportunity, as well as a, a messaging opportunity. We could talk about the green aspects in the building, uh, but there's just another way to get some messaging across to, to the public. Next. Okay. And then this last little piece is something that, um, we, we thought we put together as an address sign for, uh, for the public. Um, again, this, we're required to have big numbers, the numbers on the building, but we thought they looked better out here. Um, we can certainly do those numbers on the building. This is really for the fire department. Um, and so again, we want to sort of bring it all together, make sure we're using all the same materials, make sure we have consistency, but that's kind of the last environmental graphic piece. And I think that's it.
I think. Okay, so before, before, if we can raise hands, please. A question on the, I like the seven, seven, one out on the street, but if we should ever get the other building built and there's still the uh, temporary building there, and if there's a medical call, how would we differentiate the various locations for a medical call, especially if we ever got the gym built?
We would actually work with dispatch and our fire department on, uh, their preference.
Okay.
Addressing on the west side.
Okay, with that, looking for raised hands? Councilwoman Papin? Councilman Ru, uh, Ruben, go ahead, please.
Yeah, I mean, I, I like the large Millbrae sign at the entrance. Um, but I don't know if it necessarily should also double as a donor wall. I think, I mean, personally, my preference would be to have more of a, sort of a traditional donor wall, you know, inside the lobby area, just inside the entrance. Um, maybe something similar to what we have at the library or, um, I, I know at the, at the San Mateo Library, there's a very nice donor wall. I think it's like a metal, uh, like a steel plaque type of thing, um, that has all the different names included in it. Um, so I think that would be my preference, but I think we do need something to clearly identify what the building is.
Thank you, Mr. Holibur. No other comments?
Go back one side.
Go ahead, Mr. Fung. Go ahead, Mr. Fung.
Are we doing any, uh, donors on say, meeting rooms and all the other different features of, uh, the building?
That is my hope. I'm hoping the team center will be named after Leo's interact Yak. You know, yes, that there would be some of that, but we're still waiting for the donor plan, aren't we, city manager?
Yeah. So count, to answer Councilmember Fung's question, yes, we are. And to answer your question, Mayor, yes, we just, uh, got under contract uh, with the, uh, consulting company that, that we had brought to the council to assist us with that for the next three months.
And looking forward to that. Could you go back to the previous side of the Millbrae sign?
One second, for a second.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't see you, uh, Vice Mayor, go ahead.
We, don't we have, uh, um, don't we have ordinance or that for naming any room in the city? Assigned ordinance or a, not sign ordinance, but a, a naming ordinance? So.
No idea.
Yes, we do.
We have a naming policy.
It's, we definitely have a policy.
A naming policy for rooms in government buildings?
Yes.
Why? I think this is a little bit different. Um, we do have that policy, but this was going to be getting sponsors, uh, and, um, as a fundraising effort to dedicate, you know, various rooms.
About, when we talk about rooms, is that you buy it, you, we, we need to be, make that clear.
Right. There would be a, you know, very similar, if you recall, to the Half Moon Bay Library fundraising. That there were, you know, for different donations, um, then that would result in, you know, different recognition.
Cause even for-
Half a million dollars.
Looking at the, the San Mateo Library and that beautiful wall of donations to us looking at, we can't, we can't name rooms in our library because of, of our policy. So we better make that perfectly clear if we go forward with this. And I'm, I'm all for it, but let's make sure our policy fits.
It's a good point. Add it to the to-do list. I wasn't aware that we, I, I, I know it's Millbrae Library Room A and Library Room B. I didn't know we had a no naming policy.
Well, I, I think the council can change that policy i- if we want to, and I, I would recommend that we look at that and, and change the policy. I was not aware that we could not name, you know, the library room, you know, after donors and, or, or people of significance for that matter, that a lot of cities do. So I would recommend that we revisit that policy.
I would love to revisit that because my first year on council, that was like a huge to do on the, on the, on the agenda. So if we could do that and, uh, create donors to the light, uh, to the, to the new rec center, but I think we might be able to facilitate a lot of things that go along also with our library as well.
Great point. Um, can you go back to the side that shows the Millbrae? And maybe it's the previous one that showed you, showed the backlighting of it. It was a multi-picture. That one right there. Uh, I, I like the idea that it could have naming on it. Uh, I like the way it's blacklit. I like the darker, of course, rather than the gray. I have a question. As we're trying to develop our cultural arts committee and that artwork goes through it, this is clearly an art installation in itself. Is this something in the budget, Tom, or something that we would need to fundraise for?
The, are you talking about the Millbrae sign, Mayor?
Yeah, the Millbrae sign.
Um, I'm gonna have to go back to the architect and, and the design build team and, and have that discussion.
Okay. I, I mean, I like it. I like the idea of naming rights. I, I'm not so sure if we could say, ah, 100 tons of con- recycled concrete or something in it, you know, some of the green attributes, but you know, until we see it, if you can find this out, Tom, you might, if you could, please run the concept past the culture arts advisory committee. Because it's an art installation. And then my only concern would be if the edges are too sharp, would people, would kids get hurt climbing on them? Cause they're going to get climbed on.
They're definitely going to get climbed on. You're, you're right. So one of the things we were looking into is just making sure these things are sturdy enough to handle all of that. Um, and, and you're right too, the edges need to, uh, need to be soft.
And then who knows, maybe the planting will discourage, and if we've got some other kind of interactive art, even if we can't afford it for the next couple of years, but it's in the plans, maybe we can direct little ones or older ones to climb on that instead of this.
So i- is there a consensus of the council on the Millbrae sign, um, as a acceptable design idea? Whether it be, I, I think as Councilmember Holibur said, you know, more of a traditional donor wall inside. But if this doesn't, you know, if we do that, bring that back to the council, but still, um, use this as signage and recognition for the-
I would say yes, for me.
So that's three, um, Ruben, Annie, myself, Anders, where are you? And I don't see Gina anymore. Uh, there she is. Thinking, need more time to think?
Signs.
Go ahead, Gina.
That's fine.
Gina, that was a, you're okay with at least looking into it, the cost, the style?
Yes.
Okay, excellent.
Same.
Okay, Tom.
Okay.
So we're set. This is marked as an action item. Is-
Mayor, we're not, we, we have some, uh, scheduling and, and a quick budget review that we wanted to present to the council as well.
Oh, for this item? Yes, I saw it in the staff report. Go ahead.
Let, let's do this. For time, I, I might suggest, if there are no questions on the schedule or the budget, then we don't have to provide the presentation. Um, but I look to the council, given that the timing and the other items we have on the agenda.
We have three other items. One of the items is a return and it went really long. And I'm hoping it won't go really long this time. Counsel, do you want to have staff give us a budget update?
Yes.
Okay, yes. I'm try, I, Ruben, where are you?
Budget update for the rec center or the mid-year budget?
For the rec center.
Quickly.
Okay. Tom, can you do it quickly?
Yep. Um, so, all right, I think we have directions. Uh, William, uh, Clarence, any questions back to the council or looks like we're good? We've got the light-
I, 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 I thank you very much, everybody. I, we, we've taken notes and we'll, we'll convene and go over those with you, but I think we're in good shape.
Okay, thank you. Um, I'll hand it back over to Jane to conclude the staff presentation with a quick overview of the budget.
Great. Um, just really quick on schedule. So foundation work is gonna progress until, uh, a, early April. The structural component will run through June. Uh, and then from there on, it's, uh, exterior through the end of the year. Interior work's gonna start while exterior work is still going in September. Uh, and that's gonna run through February, along with the site improvements, so parking lot and such. Uh, and then substantial completion is going to be approximately a year from now. And target grand opening date is June, uh, of next year. And then in terms of budget, I'm not gonna go into detail. Um, it's, it is getting late and I want to make sure everybody has enough time to go through their items, but total, uh, project cost when we, when we presented this, uh, during, in August, when we awarded the contract was, uh, twenty eight point four million dollars. Uh, right now, in terms of construction progress, we are at approximately fifteen to 20%. Uh, in terms of the design build contract, we have expended 3.5 million dollars of the 24.5. So we're right on target, about 15% budgets, um, expended and, uh, it matches the construction progress. Uh, in terms of expenditure for the contingency, uh, we are at 458,000 dollar expended of the 1.47. Uh, and it's 31%. And then in terms of Swinerton's contract, the PMCM work, uh, we're at 512 of the 1.17 million, about 44% expended. And a reminder, uh, this is because Swinerton was on board, uh, to manage the switch from design bid build to design build. Uh, here is the breakdown of the change orders. This is in the staff report, so I'm not gonna go to in-depth detail, um, but essentially we have approved change order of 458,000 dollars. There is 120,000 dollars, uh, that's pending or under review. And then, uh, as we have previously mentioned, commuter partition, crystal ceiling treatments, those were not included in the stipulated sum. Uh, but we would use the contingency amount to, um, pay for these items and these are listed here as potential costs. So it's our cost exposure uh, so far of 778,000 dollars, which is about 53% of the contingency. Uh, next slide. Sorry, having issue here scrolling. Uh, other project costs that we are tracking, uh, that's not part of the design build project. Uh, it's low voltage cabling, the emergency responding, responding, responders' radio communication system as well as kitchen appliances. So those three items were not included in the stipulated sum. And we knew that this is something that we have to do, so we created a budget line for it uh, within the project budget and it's, uh, under the 450,000 dollars additive alternate budget. Uh, in terms of the low voltage FFNE, um, that budget currently is looking like we have underestimated. Uh, so we are reviewing the scope with the designer and we'll bring back this item to the council if we, uh, if there is, uh, any cost impact to the project. Uh, other design items listed below, excuse me, the 413,000 dollars, uh, these are design changes that staff is currently reviewing. Uh, that might have cost impacts, but they have not been finalized. So if these changes are necessary and cannot be offset by any other cost saving measures elsewhere, uh, then contingency funding, uh, will be used to fund these changes. Uh, so the total for this is 143,000 dollars. Uh, there are costs that's currently not in the, um, current budget. Solar on the rooftop is about, uh, 900,000 dollars and there are also EV chargers that we would have to procure. Um, that's something that we can do is repurpose some of the charge point, excuse me, uh, some of the charge point chargers that we are, uh, actually right now removing and putting in EV goes. We're swapping out EV go chargers. So these extra charge point chargers can potentially be placed here, be repurposed here, or we can seek outside partnership for, for these chargers. In terms of funding, um, this been presented a couple of times before. Uh, basically we have total secure funding of 18.2 million dollars. The total project cost is 28.4 million dollars. Uh, so the gap we need to close is 10.2 million dollars. Um, so the change here, uh, is right, uh, the amount in the surface property sales and the loan against other development fees paid and enterprise funds. Since the last update we provided, um, there has been a change in uh, moving, whether we're gonna move forward with the property sale over at Santa Margarita and Barcelona. Uh, so, so, since, so since that is on hold, I've taken that 2 million dollars off of this uh, surface properly sales line item and dropped that to 1.5 million and increased the total loan amount by 2 million. Um, but this is still less than, uh, what was originally presented, which was closer to 10 million. In terms of loans, and this is because, uh, prior to last council meeting, uh, city staff did an audit of the budget, uh, excuse me, the budget of, um, the rec center project. Uh, and we found that we were overly conservative and there's actually 3.2 million dollars that we can use uh, for this project in the secure funding. So that concludes, uh, the presentation. Any questions on schedule or budget? I'm happy to answer those right now.
Councilman Fung.
And thank you. If you go back to the percentage slide, there you go. Oh, wait, okay, keep going.
I'll keep going.
I'll be brief, but keep going. There you go. That's it. That's the one. Um, so we're on a design bill contract at 15%. The overall construction right now is between 15 to 20% complete. So that seems to be quite in line. I am a bit concerned about where the contingency is and how we're spending that, how we're, you know, sort of, uh, uh, ahead of the construction schedule, uh, in terms of completion, uh, particularly also the PM and the CM part of it at 44%. Uh, if you go to the next slide. Okay, so we're seeing a certain amount of, uh, change orders on a hazmat and some of the, you know, foundation excavation and slab of the 60,000, which is related to, is that related to the, uh, the moisture mud that we were talking about earlier in the, uh, in the meeting?
Correct.
Okay, great. So, um, you know, we have a CM and a PM that, uh, from Swinderton. Um, and I really hoping that they can provide the leadership, the vision and the management that we need from them to really step up to the plate. You know, I would, uh, challenge them to do an excellent job, right, uh, in helping us through this process uh, and really keeping our cost, our schedule intact, um, moving forward here. So we want to be uh, very conscious about, you know, future change orders and, uh, and the, and unforeseen circumstances uh, that may hopefully never arise again. Thank you.
Councilman Holibur.
Thank you. Uh, what is the timing of the property sale, uh, on Sequoia?
Sorry, Tom, I don't have the update on that.
All right, I was looking for my mute button. Um, so we do have a broker under contract, um, and, uh, the update that I received from, uh, Keylim is that there was a survey that was completed. Um, I think that there's a soil, uh, testing that's occurring and that should be ready to be listed here in the next, uh, within the next 30 days.
Okay. And, um, was it interesting that there was also potential surplus property identified? Um, sort of above, uh, the Glen Oaks School, uh, near the Lamita Spur Trail property. Is that something we're still pursuing?
Yes, um, we will be bringing that to the city council as well. Um, we, we kind of, we kind of didn't pursue that because we're in pretty good shape with a budget uh, as of right now, but we still, um, we'll bring that to the council for consideration.
Okay, because it looks like, you know, we've had some items come up with the, um, contingency. Um, eating that, eating away, uh, the contingency a little bit.
Yeah.
Um, and we still have several items that are not included in the budget, some of which are really critical. I believe the, uh, the security cameras and electrical wiring, um-
Solar, the PV, yep.
Yeah, solar panels, that's a big one.
Yeah.
Kitchen appliances as well, um, not included. Um, so I think we may want to, uh, you know, not write off the Barcelona Santa Margarita property quite yet. I think we might still want to consider that. Um, I, I think we were going to, to look into it a bit more, uh, but you know, considering the, the funding needs, I think we should at least be, be looking into that and, and seeing if there's a way to do it that's, uh, yeah. That, I, that listens to the concerns of, of the neighbors.
Right. Before I ca- thank you, Councilman. Before I call in Vice Mayor Aliva, one of the things that, that the ca- city manager and I talked about, that piece of land there that you just mentioned is, and it's not an easy thing, but if we pursued the habitat conservation plan and then sold rights to keeping it in its natural oak woodland state, which is protected habitat in California, we could basically monetize it, but keep it exactly as it is. So the neighborhood gets what they want and we can monetize it by selling it to some developer who needs to mitigate, uh, environmental issues at that site, but that's years away. It's not a, a simple thing to do. And, but it is, it's a way to monetize these properties in kind of a cool way a- and maintain it. So just throwing that out there. Vice Mayor Aliva.
So can we go to the last slide, please? How, uh, uh, I guess, how are we gonna get to that 10 million? City manager?
So we're there. I, I think this adds up. So we've got, um, you know, we, we, as we discussed, we can loan against ourselves, which we're doing and we're, we're, um, increasing that amount, but we're still under what we had presented and to- but we're still under what we had presented anticipated this city. Or to the city council, I should say, sorry. I'm just adding this up. 8.711 and 1.5 should equal 10.2 million.
And, and you're confident that we could get there?
I am, yep.
I'd like to hear that. And Mayor Schneider, you said you had some, like, when this all happened five years ago, you said you had some, you had some ways to go against some people that might be able to fund for us. Are you still on board with this?
I'm still willing to look. I'm not exactly sure what I said five years ago, but I know in speaking to sadly, a member who has since moved out of Millbrae, but once we get the fundraising plan, we can see if we can do some serious fundraising. In addition, Councilman Holliver, myself, city manager Williams, we're meeting with Peninsula Clean Energy on Friday to talk about what potential, what potential mechanism we might use to get the solar panels. I'm not sure what else the city manager is planning for that meeting, but I'll also say, having spent the last three days at the National League of Cities with the new American COVID Recovery Act, that's not its correct name, those funds are money that would, they're a hole we already have, but that's 4.1 million. And tomorrow we are lobbying, we, those of us who went through the training are lobbying for a very large green or very large infrastructure bill. And in the infrastructure bill are things like EV charging stations. This is what the President Biden wants to fund. And we here with this project are so shovel ready. This is, I hadn't put it together right now. We actually have shovel ready projects. So maybe there's something that we can do. Now that the transportation funding is the bill we're lobbying for, and then it would have to get through both houses and get signed. But there's also the American funds. And then there's another fund from the federal government. So.
You had, I thought you did actually come up with private funding. So.
Well, we, we can go and look for it. More of that private funding was in terms of the gymnasium, was trying to find, there are some big foundations in Southern California, family foundations who like to build gyms, but we did not for the gym right now.
So we need $10 million and city manager confident we can get this, we're going to do this together.
So there was a shortfall of 10 million, but this shows you how we're getting the 10 million.
I got you.
Yeah, these two. So we're not, it's not this plus an additional 10 million.
No, I know.
Okay.
But we're confident we could do this together.
Yes, yeah, this, this is. Correct.
I would tell you the downside with COVID, if you look at, for example, the Millbrae Lions Club and their ability to do a significant donation, for example, items in the kitchen, that's been drastically reduced because all of their fundraising activities have been, for the intents and purposes, stopped. So when that fundraising plan comes, we might show some weaknesses there for FFNE. Okay, do you need an action from us? Councilman Papin, do you have comments?
No comment.
Okay, um, city manager, what else do you need from us? This is listed as an action item. Do we need to put anything into a formal motion, or were you just getting our points of view?
No, Mayor, thank you. I think we, we've received the direction that we need from the council this evening. There's a few items that we will be bringing back as we work with the design build team. Very shortly. We need, the most important thing is we stay on schedule and stay within our budget.
Thank you. And to our, our DBE team, thank you so much. Thank you to staff. Thank you, council. This was a long item. And let's move on. Next up is agenda item 10, adopt a resolution to establish a reimbursement fee program for the Millbrae Station area specific plan. This is an action item per our city attorney Joan Casman. Just to remind us, we closed the public hearing last time. So what we're going to do tonight is have a brief staff report. There has been a letter sent to all of us from Sarah Station. Staff feels pretty strongly that we're in the right direction. So staff, go ahead. Hopefully, we can keep conversation or discussion to a minimal.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to introduce Roscoe Mata, our planning manager.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Is my presentation showing up okay?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and members of the city council. I'm Roscoe Mata, Planning Manager. I'll be making the presentation on the Millbrae Station area specific plan reimbursement fee resolution. I'm joined tonight by Michael Conneran, Deputy City Attorney, who assisted with this effort. Before I begin my presentation, I would like to note that we did receive public correspondence from Janet Fogarty, attorney for Vince Muzzi and Willberry Sarah Station regarding this item. And the correspondence was sent to council via email. The objective tonight is to adopt a reimbursement fee program for the preparation costs of the Millbrae Station area specific plan. By way of background, the Millbrae Station area specific plan was originally adopted in 1998. And at the request of Urban Republic, I'm sorry, Republic Urban and developer of Millbrae Sarah Station, the MSASP was updated in 2016. The developers for Gateway and Millbrae Sarah Station are to get reimbursed from a fair share proportion amount as future development occurs in the plan area. This update resulted in increased heights and densities in the specific plan area, and the environmental impact report that is associated with the update allows for future projects to benefit off of the environmental review. Also, during the last planning, I'm sorry, during the last city council meeting, the council adopted an ordinance which allows the city to collect the reimbursement fee for the preparation of the specific plan. And the resolution before you tonight allows for the preparation of a reimbursement fee program for the MSASP specific plan. Just to give overview of the boundary of the Millbrae Station area specific plan, the boundary is indicated in the red dotted line that encompasses this area of the city. The proposed resolution before you tonight as attachment to establishes the parcels that are subject to the fee and the methodology to determine the amount per parcel. And one specific item to note in the resolution is the amount payable. And what the resolution proposes is that the fee be paid either prior to the design review permit being scheduled for a public hearing before the planning commission, or prior to the approval of staff level of design review permit, or if a design review permit is not required prior to the issuance of the first building permit. And we believe that this clearly specifies the instances in which the, the fees would be due without creating much confusion, given the previous language. The qualifying parcels in the Millbrae Station area specific plan are indicated in the green outline. These are just general areas in the specific plan. Each parcel, there are several parcels within each of these parcels, these areas rather, and those individual parcels will be reviewed on a project by project basis. But these areas in green are those parcels that received a benefit of a mic height increase maximum greater than 15 feet compared to the 1998 original specific plan. So these areas in green are subject to that new fee. Proposed resolution, first you have to indicate, you have to calculate the amount of cubic feet of density increase compared to the 1998 specific plan. And if you calculate all the heights and for all those areas that received a height, maximum height increase greater than 15 feet, the total about 54,801,609 total cubic feet. The total specified update cost is 1.9 million, a little bit over 1.9 million. And dividing the update cost by the cubic feet results in a rate of .0353. And in order to calculate the fee, you would calculate the lot area by the, the height increase that, the benefit of the height increase compared to the 1998 specific plan by the rate. And in the example I provided here, this particular example, the lot area is 32,659 square feet. And this particular parcel received a 35 foot cloud height increase, and you multiply that by the rate of .0353, and that yields of 40,537.74 cents. In regards to the fiscal impact, adopting the fee program will not result any impact to the city finances. As the total cost of the MSASP update, including the supporting environmental review documents for reimbursement, was a little over 1.9 million. The developers of TOD 1 and 2 have already paid this amount, and the revenues from the proposed fee would go to reverse those developers that were, that previously paid for the city. So to summarize again, the action staff is recommending tonight is for the council to adopt the resolution as proposed in attachment to implementing the specific plan reimbursement fee program for the Millbrae Station area specific plan. Staff is available for any questions. Should the council have any? Thank you. All right, I'd like to note that should the, the action be adopted this evening, the fees will take effect in 60 days.
Thank you, Mr. Mata. All right, council, if we can have a quick round of questions and open it up for public comment. And any, any questions, any comments for Mr. Mata? I can only see two council members. I don't see any hands up. Opening it up for public comment? Elaine, did we, I know we received the letter.
Oh, Jen Fogarty does have her hand up.
Why am I not seeing any?
She had it on, she raised her hand on her video.
Oh, okay. Um, please, Ms. Fogarty, or former mayor Fogarty, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor Schneider. I, we would like our record, the record to reflect the letter of March 5th, and I won't read the whole thing because it's been a long night. We do appreciate that the staff and the city attorney have worked with us to get this resolution together and make it clear so that people understand what it is, is being paid for. We do ask as a compromise language that you incorporate language that council member Feng proposed last time, which would have the developers pay at the time it's determined that there's no further environmental study required, or that there's no more added review under SEQA, because that is in fact what they're paying for is that that was already done and paid for by these two developers. We, we ask this because we think it treats the, all of the parties more fairly in allowing them to understand very clearly when it is the fee is due. And to recognize the benefit that they've received from it. I'd like to also clarify that the, the developers did request this, but they requested it at the city's urging because it benefits all of the city. It doesn't just benefit the developers. Millbrae Sarah Station paid about $900,000 toward this. And according to the schedule that's before you, they benefited to the extent of about $263,000. So they, they paid about three quarters of a million more than their benefit from what was done. It should be noted that the city also benefited in a, in a very real way, in that the city received about an extra million and a half of cubic feet of development potential for the city's own lot. And of course, this benefits the city by providing the basis for the city to be able to meet our housing requirements and provide much needed revenue to the city going forward. It would, it puts the city in a position to be competitive with the cities around us, which are providing housing and getting it online much quicker than we are. And with that comes new business and new revenue for the city. So I thank you for your consideration tonight.
Thank you, Mayor Fogarty. Elaine, do we have anyone else?
I'm looking, but nothing, anyone I can see, Mayor.
Thank you. I do see, okay, with that, I'm going to close public comment. Council comments. Boy, we're quiet.
Move approval.
Okay, motion to approve, Councilwoman Papin, is there a second?
Comment, Ms. Madam Mayor?
Yes, please, go ahead.
So, yeah, I, you know, thank you for the public comment, first of all. Second, I did recognize that when I made the comment last time, I was more referring to the timeline at which, you know, these fee should be reimbursed back to the developer, given the fact that by the time you deem an application complete, some of these, all these environmental documents, environmental reviews and research would have been completed by then, and therefore these new, these costs would have incurred as if a new developer coming in without the previous, without the benefit of previous developers spending that, the money to doing these environmental documents ahead of time, they would have, you know, spent those money to do their own. But realizing the fact that we really cannot condition, you know, these kind of fees as part of deeming an application complete, there's certain legal requirements to these things. I think what the staff has proposed right now is sort of the next best thing, the closest thing to, you know, what I had proposed last time. So therefore, I would support the staff's recommendation and our second motion.
Thank you, Councilman Feng. Any further discussion? Okay, to Mayor Fogarty and to Mr. Muzzi, thank you for all your time of working with staff. I don't think tonight you're going to quite get what you want, but let's hope that we start moving these projects much more quickly, and you can get that return for money that you've already spent. City clerk, could you please call the vote?
Councilmember. Councilmember Feng.
Aye.
Councilmember Papin.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Leva.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Schneider.
Aye.
The resolution to adopt a resolution implementing a specific plan, Pacific Plan Reimbursement Fee Program for the Millbrae Station area Pacific Plan passed by the vote of 5 to 0.
Excellent. Thank you all. And thank you for working with the city. All right, on to new business. If we could get, I'm going to guess, our, our new finance director, new finance administrative director up. It's accept the fiscal year 2021 mid-year budget report and adopt a resolution amending the 2021 adopted budget. Now, this is funny. It says it's informational, but it says adopt. Is this simply informational tonight?
Madam Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to request to move item 12 up next. I know we have some.
Oh, certainly. I'm happy with that. Do I need a motion to do that, or can we just do it at request?
Consensus.
I agree.
We're all upset. All right. I'm sorry, Mr. Sung. Item 12, consider introducing and adopting an urgency ordinance to require large grocery stores and drugstores to provide hazard pay to their public facing employees during the pandemic. And this is an action item. All right, staff, if you're ready to go forth, please do. I don't know if someone's muted or just.
Sorry, Mayor, I'd like to introduce Ms. Darcy Smith, our community development director.
Welcome, Ms. Smith.
Thank you. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and council members. I'm going to be presenting this item tonight, and I'll try to move. I'm going to be presenting this item tonight and I'll try to move fast because I know time is of the essence. This item is item twelve, the Urgency Ordinance, and it's before you tonight to consider adoption of this, which would require large grocery stores and large drugstores to provide hazard pay to their public facing employees due to COVID nineteen pandemic, and I'll explain exactly what that means through this slide presentation. I'll give a quick background of COVID nineteen hazard pay in case it's a new concept, but it's an additional hourly wage on top of the base hourly wage. Typically, for this example, for grocery and drugstores, it has ranged from about three to five dollars per hour. And it's typically for those essential frontline workers who be justly compensated for the ongoing hazards and dangers of being exposed to and then potentially infected by the novel coronavirus. Some stores have voluntarily paid this. That was common last year at the onset of the pandemic. But more recently, starting late last year and January, February through March, ordinances have been adopted by large cities, started primarily in Long Beach and Oakland and started nationwide too. But in locally, we've seen these adopted by San Mateo, South San Francisco, and just today, the San Francisco Board of Supervisors adopted a mandatory ordinance. And these cities locally have consistently followed the five dollar per hour rate. I also have information that the county has considered this, but they have not moved that legislation forward at this point. There is a documented need for this ordinance, and that's required by the California Government Code Section three six nine three seven. You've had these urgency ordinances come before you during the COVID nineteen pandemic, such as for evictions, and the council is authorized under that statute to both introduce and adopt an ordinance in one meeting. However, there are very specific findings that are required to be made for that immediate preservation related to the public peace, health and safety. And it does require a more stringent for fifth affirmative vote for enactment. The documentation provided in the ordinance for this specific topic is that essential grocery and drugstore workers have continued to report to work and serving communities such as Millbrae despite those hazards of the frontline work, and certainly other workers fall into this category. But again, this, this piece of legislation has been commonly adopted in other communities. And another basis for this was adoption by the council of the pandemic emergency declaration that was made almost a year to the date back on March nineteenth, the resolution twenty twenty eighteen. So this specific ordinance that's before you tonight for enactment had some unique features I just want to point out. So you know what the thresholds are. This would only apply to five store locations in town. And it would include only grocery stores and drugstores that employ a thousand or more employees nationwide. And those stores and only those stores would be required to pay this hazard pay, which is set at five dollars per hour to frontline employees who are working right now. And again, that five dollars per hour is consistent with our peer cities and, and other cities nearby. And the ordinance, if you want to read it, most definitively defines grocery store and drugstores, but important to note, there are five of those stores in town. It includes Safeway, Lucky's, Trader Joe's and Walgreens, the two locations, and it's payable to non-salaried, part-time or full-time employees who work exposes them to contact with store patrons. So back of house staff who have no contact at all would not benefit from this. It also does not apply to any employers who have entered into a collective bargaining agreement that explicitly waives entitlement to this pay, and this is consistent with provisions of federal law. As I mentioned previously, have adopted it, would go into effect immediately tonight and expire one hundred and twenty days after its adoption. That one hundred and twenty days is again in line with other cities. And it provides enough time for covered employees to be vaccinated and get their second doses as needed. Those members of the workforce were eligible starting February twenty second, but as you've heard on your briefings or in the news, there can be some lag time in scheduling appointments, so we just wanted to be be conservative and get one hundred and twenty days after adoption. And some administrative items, but the ordinance has a lot of key features found in other ordinances related to noticing, record keeping and enforcement of the ordinance. There have been other legal challenges to other ordinances and so the grocery store industry has been filing lawsuits related to that hazard pay. And they've argued that the ordinances violate the Constitution's equal protection clause by singling out these specific stores for this pay. They also make other allegations that it violates constitutional prohibitions against impairment of contracts preempted by National Labor Relations Act and collective bargaining process. As I mentioned, there is a carve carve out for that in the ordinance. But I want to emphasize, there's really not a well-established body of case law, being as how these ordinances are relatively new. So at this point, it's premature for, for the city attorney to provide specific guidance on legal issues or confidently answer whether it would withstand a legal challenge. We did compete, complete some outreach and Elisa Tierney, our Housing and Economic Development Manager, is available tonight to answer any questions as she went out into the field to contact the stores and, and outreach to the corporate staff. We notified everyone and got some feedback. For example, Trader Joe's said they're already paying a four dollar premium and they have no formal comments. We did hear from Safeway, their Director of Public and Government Affairs submitted written comments to the council that was transmitted earlier today by the city clerk. Walgreens and Lucky, which is Save Mart, haven't submitted anything in writing yet, but we just received during this meeting, some written comments submitted by the California Grocers Association, which were distributed via email, but you may not have had a chance to meet that raises some of the other points that I mentioned in, in the legal challenges that were made by this association and others city. I'll quickly cover the fiscal impact. There's no material impact on the city's budget from this. And it doesn't create any substantial obligations on the city absent a legal challenge. We did expend some resources doing outreach and if adopted tonight, would need to provide some more outreach to those businesses subject to this. And if for some reason we were required to enforce the ordinance, then that could also require additional resources. But in conclusion, recommendation of staff is to consider adoption of this urgency ordinance that would require large grocery stores and large drugstores to provide hazard pay to their public facing employees due to the COVID nineteen pandemic. So this concludes my staff report. I'm happy to answer any questions along with the city manager and city attorney who have been involved in this, as well as our Housing and Economic Development Manager, Ms. Tierney.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. I, I want to say I thought the staff report was extremely well-written, and I know that you did it very, very quickly. And thank you to staff, city attorney for working on this in the, basically in the last week. So thank you very much. Counsel, would you like to ask some questions right now or get public comment if there is any? I know I have not read the grocer's letter, but you said, Ms. Smith, you said it's pretty much their concerns, their legality concerns. Counsel, what would you like to do? Public comment?
Public comment first.
Public comment, okay. Well, I've got Councilwoman Pappman and Vice Mayor Leva. Do you want to go before public comment? Councilwoman Pappman?
I'll wait, I'll wait for public comment.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, all right, we have, it looks like Elaine Richard Hedges is first up, and it looks like we've got a long list here. So it is getting late. If we can keep our comments succinct.
Thank you, Madam Schneider and honorable council members. I've been involved with the grocery industry since nineteen fifty eight. It's hard work, often fast and sometimes heavy. Our members are working under hazardous conditions now. Besides the dangers of COVID, they've been assaulted and spat upon by people who refuse to wear masks. Fortunately, these are limited circumstances, but they have occurred. I wanted to tell you that last night, Daily City adopted this measure and upped it by two dollars, it's seven dollars. Also Lucky's has been paying it, a small regional company since the beginning. Piazza's and Drager's, who have very few stores, have been paying it, and Trader Joe's have been paying it. Only the huge companies owned by private equity companies have refused to pay it. So you can be a great help to our, our members and people who are actually unorganized tonight by passing this ordinance. One in five of our members nationally have contracted the virus. Seventy nine thousand, to be exact, six hundred deaths. Locally, about three thousand of our members in the Bay Area have contracted the virus. And of all of these illnesses, there are untold numbers of family members who have been exposed and contracted the virus when people took it home from work. These people need to be rewarded for the hazardous conditions that they're working under. There was some discussion of a lawsuit. The first one was against Long Beach. That with a request for TRO, the TRO has been dismissed. And from the statements of the judge, most people feel that it's likely there'll be anything prevailed in that lawsuit. So hazard pay will make their lives a lot, a lot better. Just remember that when I was first here in the Bay Area, a grocery clerk could afford a home in San Mateo. Now, two of them working full-time struggle to afford an apartment in San Mateo County. Many of them are queuing in for long hours. Now you add to that the possibility of losing one's life. They really deserve hazard pay. I know you'll do the right thing, like many other cities have, and compel these cities or these stores that aren't paying it to pay it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Hedges. Mr. Wong.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members and staff. I'm Leon with UFCW Local Five, representing thousands of grocery workers and pharmacy workers in the Bay Area. I wanted to voice out for our essential workers regarding hazard pay. Many people may be confused by the name of hazard pay because in fact it should have been called appreciation pay or hero pay. Hazard pay is not just an appreciation for their service to the community during this pandemic, but most importantly, these extra dollars per hour will help them buy extra PPEs that the employers fail to provide. Besides helping them with their bills, that buy more food for their family, and that makes a huge difference for the workers. These workers have the highest risk of COVID nineteen exposure when compared to bank workers and workers in other industries due to the high volume of customers they encounter in person every day. Companies have commented about providing an extra five dollars an hour is close to a thirty percent wage increase, which is unheard of. That number only shows that these essential workers have long been underpaid and underappreciated. These companies claim to take pride in giving the best treatments to their workers, and yet when we ask them to provide temporary relief like hazard pay to their workers at a time they need it the most, these companies turn their backs and simply say that they have already provided enough. These workers face so much difficulties and stress in trying to stay safe at work just so we can bring food to our table and to provide medications to those who depend on it. They didn't give up serving our community, even when facing the risk of COVID for them and their family. So to show appreciation for these hidden heroes for all that they do for our community, we're also not giving up on hazard pay for them, and we respectfully request that you consider an urgency ordinance for hazard pay of five dollars per hour for our grocery store and drugstore workers. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Wong. Ms. Lind.
Good evening, Mayor Schneider, Vice Mayor, council members and staff. Julie with the Labor Council. Thank you for giving me a few moments of your time this evening. And thanks to Councilmember Pappman for raising this issue and for counsel to choosing to, for choosing to move forward on it. While all of our numerous frontline workers are serving heroically and putting themselves into dangerous situations to deliver critical goods and services, the motivation behind this for these workers specifically is rate of pay and degree of exposure. The workers that would be covered under this ordinance make an average of seventeen dollars an hour, are physically interacting with hundreds of people every shift and have been since the onset of the pandemic, have a national COVID infection rate of one in five, as Brother Hedges said, and have taken on myriad additional duties relative to COVID protocols with no additional compensation. Further, most long ago exhausted any paid sick leave and are now forced to go without pay should they need to quarantine due to COVID exposure to care for themselves or their family members who are exposed or who, God forbid, contracted. This additional period of compensation will help them offset some of that financial hardship and will hopefully allow these workers to get the added critical protection of the COVID vaccine. As you know, Cell City, Daily City and San Mateo have ordinances already in effect. And Redwood City is set to take up a draft ordinance in two weeks with Cell City considering an ordinance as well. We were all hoping the county would move forward on doing this countywide, but that looks highly improbable. And while our chain stores continue to rake in record profits, the vast majority of them are not investing those in the workers that make it possible. Our folks are incredibly grateful to you for seeing to right that wrong. We hope you'll consider slight amendments of lowering your base employee count to seven hundred and fifty and including up to four hours of paid leave for workers to get their vaccines, as is included in other ordinances in the county. We'd love to see you pass this ordinance tonight and to encourage your colleagues in other cities to follow your lead as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lind. I'm sorry, I was taking notes. One of the things that we don't have in tonight's ordinance is up to four hours to get their COVID vaccinations?
That's not in our.
That's not in our current version of the ordinance.
But it is in others.
Okay, I, I was trying to write everything. I might have missed something that Ms. Lind gave, so when we come back. Thank you, Julie. Mr. Gomez.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, you're coming in great.
Awesome, awesome. My name is John Gomez. I am an essential grocery worker and a member of UFCW Local Five. I wanted to speak today in support of hazard pay. You know, since the beginning of the pandemic, we have continued to go into work, you know, risking our health and the health of our family members. You know, as Mr. Hedges spoke on for, we deal with anti-maskers. We've been spat at, we've been cussed at, disrespected. Our workload has, has more than doubled. You know, and, you know, hazard pay would, would go a long way in, in giving us not only peace of mind, but, but a cushion to, to pay our, make sure we could pay our bills, make sure we could pay our rent, make sure we can afford a doctor's visit or medicines if we get sick. Or if we miss work, you know, a lot of grocery workers, like was mentioned before, seventeen dollars an hour, you know, that, that is what they're having to support their family on and, and, you know, that's not much in California, as you may well know. So I, I do urge you to pass the hazard pay ordinance. Again, I can't express how important this would be to us. And again, thank you for all the work you're doing and I yield my time.
Thank you, Mr. Gomez. Uh, Mr. McGilly.
Hi, yes, my name is Ryan McGilly. I am an organizer with UFCW Local Five. As many of the commentators before me have mentioned, our essential workers in grocery, I've been working since day one of the pandemic. Not for not a single day did these grocery stores close, and they have continued to feed our communities throughout these difficult times. Our members face not just verbal abuse, but threats of physical violence and threats of not only getting a virus themselves, but also bringing the virus home to their family. They face this on a daily basis. Throughout the last summer, many of these corporations were giving appreciation and hero pay across the country until one day in June where they all conspired to end the pay on the exact same day to avoid any media backlash or public opinion backlash. And again, during the summer, myself included, but we have all been banging pots and pans outside of our windows. We've been clapping for all of these essential workers to show them our appreciation. And I believe that it is time for Millbrae to join other cities in the Bay Area and other municipalities throughout the Bay Area to put their money where their mouth is and really show our appreciation for keeping our communities fed throughout these difficult times.
Thank you, Mr. McGilly. Is there anyone else in the public or on the phone that would like to present to council, comment to council? Okay, I am not seeing, Elaine, do you have anybody on the phone that I might not see? Anybody waving in the photographs out there?
I do not see any.
Okay, with that, I am going to close public comment and open this to city council. Oops, Elaine, call the. Elaine called the firsthand, you see I clicked the wrong way. Councilwoman Papen, thank you. Thank you, Elaine.
Thank you to staff for putting this together. I will state first that I did speak to the representative from Lucky's slash Save Mart. They have been paying hazard pay since the beginning, close to $80 million. And really, they know what their workers are going through. I have spoken to our workers at Safeway, as has been attested to what they are going through right now with people not abiding by the mask, being spit at, being assaulted. This just, this is a temporary ordinance. This is something we need to do for the people that work within our community. This, look, you've got Trader Joe's is already doing it. You have major corporations here. Safeway is revenue $37.6 billion. These companies are making a profit during COVID, and the employees are really suffering through this. So I would ask that we be consistent, try to get down to 750 as far as the ordinance goes, and then add in the four hours of paid time to get the vaccine. Hopefully, within the next, the time period of this ordinance, we can get people vaccinated and we can bring it down so that things are under control and we can move beyond this. I think this is extremely important for our community. These are the people who have been at the front line. These are not the businesses that have been hurting. These are the ones that have been making the money because their employee, they are essential businesses. Their employees have been on the front line. I do hope that my colleagues will join us and join the other cities that are doing this. Again, it's for a limited timeframe. It's for the benefit of not only our residents, but the workers that have been on the front line since the beginning. So I ask my council members to please support this, and I will gladly make the motion when the time comes. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Councilwoman Papen. City staff, could you think about, I agree with Councilwoman Papen in adding the four hours for a vaccine? And if I missed something else that Julie Lind mentioned that other cities are doing, I just couldn't write fast enough.
It's bringing down the number between 1,000 to 750 employees.
Okay.
Again, it's not really going to change much within our city, but be consistent with others.
Very good. Thank you, Councilwoman. Vice Mayor Oliva.
Yeah, this is kind of like a no-brainer. Thank you, Councilmember Papen, for bringing this to our attention, which we should have already been in, in vision to. That the fact remains that it's unfortunate that we don't have volunteers in our community that are making all this money, that are already, that are giving to this whole frontline workers, and I thank them very much for a daily need that we all have. And I'm happy everybody's profiting in the time of the need, but, I mean, come on, everybody needs to give at this time. My question, I'm all for this 100%. I would, I would just question, when, when is the temporary process over? So.
Twenty days.
How much?
120 days, according to our ordinance.
Yeah.
I mean, the vaccination rate should go way up by then. So I think, I think we should be very in a good position at that point.
I would move that to add to this, that we revisit this in 120 days. Instead of making it temporary, we actually revisit it to make sure that we're, we're all on par to what's going on in our community. My only amendment to your, you haven't made the motion yet, but that would be my part of the motion.
I would note that you have the ability to either extend it or to limit it. If you find it, you know, everyone's vaccinated in 90 days, you could always take it off, but you could also extend it. So I don't know if you need to modify it right now. I think 120 days is sort of the agreed amount, and again, you're not limited to that. You could change it later.
And so revisit it?
Good, yep.
Okay, then I'd be all for this.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilman Holibur.
Thank you, thank you to all the speakers this evening, and thank you to Councilmember Papen for bringing this forward. You know, the grocery and drugstore workers have been working their tails off through this pandemic and have really been exposed at the front lines, a lot of customers, a lot of people. And, you know, they're right in the, in the middle of the transmission of this virus. So I'm very much supportive of this. I wish this would have been, would have been done by the county to make it countywide. I don't think it's beneficial to have sort of a patchwork of some cities choosing to do it and others not doing so. But considering that, you know, San Mateo and South San Francisco and now Daly City are moving forward this. Regardless of your opinion, I don't think we really have much of a choice at this point. Because we don't want our workers to be making less than in neighboring cities. And thank you also to Trader Joe's and Lucky's for doing this voluntarily. I think Safeway and Walgreens, both very large companies, they're doing quite well. Really have not been faced with the types of restrictions that other types of businesses have been faced with in the pandemic. So I don't see any issue with them being able to keep this cost. So yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Feng.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to first say thank you, staff, and thank you, Councilmember Papen, for bringing this to our attention. We should have done this a long time ago. Just wanted to, you know, big hands to our grocery and our frontline workers, drugstore workers. You know, just keep in mind, you know, if you just backtrack a little bit, back in March 16 of 2020, when everybody's scared to go out, when everybody is staying at home, you know, putting their mask on, just staying home scared. They are the people who comes out and work every day. These are the people who has been serving our residents, you know, throughout the entire country. You know, they are, they are forced to go to work because they are essential workers. They are the one who is providing us, putting food on the, on the aisle so that we can get food and feed our family. They are the one who is, you know, counting the pills so that we can get our medications. You know, they keep us alive. They keep us, you know, healthy, fed during this pandemic, and they put their own health on the line while doing that. And so we really should have done this a long time ago, you know. So I just wanted to say that, you know, big thanks to these grocery workers, these drugstore workers who has been putting their health on the line in serving everyone. COVID really has unfairly affected our working-class families, people of color, as well as immigrants, you know, who, you know, vast majority, you know, made up the groceries and the drugstore workers. So, you know, during this difficult time, you know, we must show compassion to our working-class families and really, really should be thanking these people. And, you know, like I said, this should have been done a long time ago. So strongly supportive of this measure, and I couldn't be happier to bring this forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Feng. To all of the speakers tonight and to the grocery and drugstore workers, I am very grateful. I have been, I have a 93-year-old at home. We have been really staying at home almost all the time, but my mom is gluten-free and trying to find gluten-free products is really tough. And fresh vegetables and produce, I love the Safeway produce, man. So I'm very happy. I agree with everything my fellow council members have said. Very happy to support this. I'd like to see the amendments that Julie Lynn mentioned, if we can get that in the motion, Councilwoman Papen. And again, thank you for bringing this to us. I have one question. Our treats are to go to either Leonardo's Deli, which is a family-owned, or Pete's or Starbucks that are franchises. And I talk to them all the time, and they're lovely and they're cheerful, and they're our treat. How are they being covered in this? Because they're having direct contact. And golly, when I'm at Pete's, it seems as busy as Safeway. And if this isn't the right time, I just would love to see them get their vaccines. And I'd like to make sure that they, our other retail businesses are also taken care of. But if this is where we are tonight, let's move forward. And city manager, for, for Vice Mayor Oliver's, Oliva's comment, can we put on our calendar to readdress this in 120 days? I mean, we're all hopeful that all adults will be vaccinated by the end of May, but we still have children. We don't know what the, the variations are going to do, so let's make sure it's on our calendar. If we need to extend.
Madam Mayor, just so we can be clear, the amendments sought are to change the 1,000 threshold, employee threshold to 750. I would have language I can suggest for the pay time off for vaccination, that we add that as a new section seven, renumber the succeeding sections, and it would read, "Covered employers shall provide covered employees with up to four hours of paid time off to compensate covered employees for the time required to obtain COVID-19 vaccinations."
Yes, please.
Okay. Ms. Papen, do you want to make the motion?
I would like to make the move, motion just as stated by council.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Mr. Feng. All right, any further discussion? I'm not seeing any hands. With that, Elaine, could you please call the question?
Councilmember Holibur.
Aye.
Councilmember Feng.
Aye.
Councilmember Papen.
Absolutely.
Vice Mayor Oliva.
No question. Yes.
Thank you. Mayor Snyder.
A very happy yes.
Thank you. The city council adopted a agency ordinance to require large grocery stores and large drugstores to provide hazard pay to their public-facing employees due to COVID pandemic, passed by a vote of five to zero with amendments.
Thank you. Thank you very much. All right, our last agenda item is agenda item number 11. Accept the fiscal year 2021 mid-year budget report and adopt a resolution amending the 2021 adopted budget. But my agenda is saying informational.
Yeah, Mayor, we're going to have to continue this item to the next meeting. And there is a conflict between the agenda items informational and the staff report, which is action. This is an action item, so we recommend we just continue it.
I bet you, it was a well-written staff report, so I thank you, but yes, let's continue it for two weeks. With that, it is, computer keeps going.
10:50 PM, 10:50 PM.
It's 10:50 PM. We haven't done city council announcements, but we have a couple of deadlines. And do we all want to do a one-minute round and get done? Okay, why don't we try a one-minute round? Councilman Holibur, I'm sorry to put you on the spot first.
I don't believe I've had any meetings since we last met two weeks ago, so I will pass, but thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Feng.
I don't think mine has much to be reported either. I did meet with the youth advisory committee and then they're, they're getting their stuff moving along, so. But I'll leave it to the next council member at this time.
Excellent. Thank you, Councilman Feng. Councilman Papen, Councilwoman Papen.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. Yes, the CCG ledge committee has met. We are discussing some housing legislation, which we're trying to get feedback from the cities, as have Metropolitan Transportation Commission also. They had supported some legislation, which I abstained from because we, the cities, have not taken any position on that. The Blue Ribbon Transit Recovery Committee is moving forward with recommendations for standards as far as transportation connectivity, seamlessness, working with Assemblymember Chu, that there may be some legislation moving forward here so that the benefits, the coordination that has been achieved at this point continues to move forward, and it becomes, when people decide to go back on public transit, that it will be smoother, more coordinated, and more for the benefit of riders. That's it.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Vice Mayor Oliva.
I'll make this short and sweet. There has been, the senior advisory committee has started a new extra meeting where they're looking to look at, like, lives, the lives of seniors. And it's been pretty invigorating and pretty fun. Once, once a week, or excuse me, once a month, other than the meeting, they've been looking at that. Sal Board has, is in a reorganization, and I'll, I'll share that with everybody going forward. With Sal, I want to just acknowledge for one second the sheriffs, how the reports that we've been getting from the chief have been amazing. And I'm sorry to hear the news today with the death of somebody on El Camino Real, which also was acknowledged a death from a transient just like two weeks prior to this.
A week before.
Okay, and I just want to give a little update that we, that I'm working pretty closely with our city manager and Councilmember Feng, and I will have a very close, I think it's the 18th, we have a homelessness subcommittee meeting coming up, and we'll be able to report out on that for the next meeting. But other than that, I think that that's all I have to report. Thanks.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Okay. The last couple of weeks have been a number of sort of extra meetings. The city, our bike pedestrian committee meeting, myself, the city manager, and a number of our engineering staff met with Sandy Wong of CCG and the transportation staff to talk about some problems with getting Milbrae projects into the plans that they have, which would therefore make them easier to get funding. Then there was another meeting just this past Monday with BPAC and engineering staff to identify routes, both east and west, and north and south of Milbrae. So I want to say thank you to staff for all that extra time and to John Keever and Cristal Negro, who are helping us get all of our plans in order to make us more grant accessible. The High-Speed Rail comments on the revised draft business plan is due on March 12. In the current business plan revised draft on page 13 is one of two references to Milbrae, and it includes a statement that says, "Milbrae has signed an MOU." They then claim that that's not really what it said. At any rate, Milbrae will be sending in a letter. We are also sending in a letter on the FAA's, this will sound really weird. They've done a neighborhood annoyance study. It's a three-year study, they just released it. And in it, they found that the annoyance levels are much greater than they thought. So we will be commenting both from the roundtable, and I don't know if we've got time to do it as a city, but to talk about the concepts. The problem is they only look and look at one type of noise and not the noise that most affects Milbrae. Finally, had my first civic mayor civic coordinating council. We had really good turnout. Thank you to all of the public members. City Clerk Tran has been working with me to create a sheet, a questionnaire. Sounds too much, just a short little thing about their projects, their website, and we're updating the city website. If there is a community group out there and you would like to be invited, please reach out to the city clerk or to me so that we can get you added to the mayor's civic coordinating council. Our next meeting will be the fourth Thursday of the month. Thank you.
Final note, Madam Mayor.
Please.
Brian Perkins from Congresswoman Jackie Spears' office just sent out an announcement for local jurisdictions. So thank you to the Congresswoman. It looks like Milbrae, hopefully, fingers crossed, will get an additional 4.22 million as our part of the recovery money. So we really appreciate the Congresswoman's efforts along those lines.
That's a good point, and I see that, Mr. Feng, hang tight. Because I've been at this National League of Cities training the last three days, there's been a great deal of discussion of the amount of money that goes to cities that are really big, 100,000 above, and then the 50,000 to 100,000, and then the difficulty in most federal funding formulas that the money to small cities like us is usually given to the state, where the state takes a little chunk, and then to a regional body, and they take a little chunk. And the new current bills working through Congress are attempting to try to get money to small cities in a non-competitive way, although it is still competitive and without a lot of hoops that we have to jump through. So that's been a lot of the talk at the National League of Cities. My gut feeling is that the big cities still have so much more power. They get direct CDBG funding, which means they'll get direct surface transportation block grants. We will still have to compete for it. So there's a lot of work there with small cities banding together. But that's part of tomorrow is to at least get these transportation funds, which can be used for a wide, wide range of activity. and the infrastructure funds, which could backfill a lot of Millbrae's projects. So with that, Councilman Feng.
Yeah, just what, uh, take no more than a minute here. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, one, a week ago, more than a week ago, I attended the Stand with Asian rally at San Mateo Central Park. Uh, really thank everyone who came out and supported this effort. I'm really proud of Millbrae. Uh, City Manager, thank you very much, and Chief Conkell, thank you very much for issuing um the statement that, uh, you know, there's zero tolerance, right? Uh, from standard, from uh City of Millbrae's perspective and our law enforcement's perspective against hate crime, really appreciate that. Uh, continue to work with former Mayor Lee uh at the API Caucus to advance, um, you know, the Stand with Asian initiative, uh, making sure that we get additional resources and lobbying for legislative options to try to put an end to these, um, you know, these racially motivated attacks, xenophobia and the like. And I also want to, a big, uh, a big hands to this thirteen-year-old young lady named Ashlyn So, who organized this event at such young age and having, uh, recognizing this issue at such young age. So I would uh actually like to urge the council to issue accommodation to this uh young lady, if I may, um, just to commend her for such great work, and um it's just, it's very inspiring to see that.
Very good. Um, and, and yes, also recognizing that Councilwoman Pappan and myself were both there. It was a really, really lovely event, and I think we all received the letter from Congresswoman Spear thanking Chief Conkell for his public statements and our activities. And as City Manager Williams listed, the city and the Millbrae Anti-Racist Coalition did receive, golly, I mean, it was a big deal. I was at the awards event last night. They, uh, it, it was runner-up, but for our first-time application and getting involved at the National League of Cities, uh, recognizing the work that we're doing, and then also getting to see these projects that won um in the bigger cities with some um, um, pretty amazing programs. But congratulations to ARC. If there are no further comments, I'd like to close tonight's city council meeting in memory of Bob Cousins. Bob Cousins uh is a long, long time Millbrae Camera Club member. A friend of my parents have to admit, I kind of grew up with him at our house because all the darkroom work was done here. He was probably one of the founders of the first original Millbrae art show. And in fact, in his obituary and on his, is there the money he, i- in lieu of his memory is to remember the Millbrae Camera Club, which is one of the last remaining camera clubs in the Greater Bay Area. So if you could please join me um in our condolences and our thoughts to Bob Cousins' family and friends. And with that, it has been a great meeting. Thank you all, and good night.
Thank you all.
Thanks, Elaine.
Thank you.
Darcy, that really was a fantastic staff report.